Good morning, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Sure, come on up. State your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is William Banks, B-A-M-K-S. I live in Falling Waters. First of all, I want to thank Council for the opportunity to be here and help with this morning. I'm kind of teeth-bold, kind of first of all looking for help first of all. As you are aware, there's quite an expansion going on in the north end of the county out in Falling Waters, Spring Mills area as far as the treatment plant, all the developments taking place. In the last part of January, earlier this month, a couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with some of the county water employees, kind of seeing them when they're working and go out and kind of talk with them, wish them have a good day and talk to them about what they're doing. Well, I got to talking with a couple of other gentlemen who I found out that were not with county water. They were with a utility locating company, and I found out that they were doing surveys. When I talked to a couple of the workers, they said that they were with county water, which they were not. Gentlemen claimed that they were with Miss Utility. I retired from a federal agency, worked with Miss Utility, and know that they identify themselves by placards on their vehicles, even when they're subcontracted by a agency or company as well. To that end, there's a company that's opening out in Spring Mills. I don't know what they're doing, I guess they're making a report, whatever it is. If they're in Spring Mills, they apparently, I don't know, but I've asked the gentleman who was with this utility locating company, and they would not tell me who they represented. First, they said they were with Berkeley County Water, which I found was untrue because I spoke with an employee from Berkeley County Water, and they told me that, they relayed to me that this company was not permitted to be doing what they were doing, surveying. But if they're working with this company, they're surveying private property. My question is, as I was told that their plans had something to do, their future plans had something to do with our private property, and I was wondering what that might be. So, I've kind of asked about the permits, and I talked with Mr. Ross and sent him a copy of their identification. One of the ladies was kind enough to look it up, they're out of Winchester, but again, they were operating as well over the holiday and on Sundays. I know that factors for water departments out there work from the out of emergencies, just like on the weekend, that's why they don't come. So, they were out there on the weekend, on a Sunday, and this past holiday, they returned to our property again. I asked another employee from the same company, who did he tell me who they were working for, they could not tell me is what he said. So, I told him what I knew, that he wasn't with Berkeley County Water, and he just said that he was there told to come and do it. So, this is just regarding my private, our private property. Been surveying other private property out there. I'm going to let whoever owns that property to pursue anything that they want to do about it or ask any questions. That being said, I went to the county police department also too. By the time I got there, it was reported to them that I was filing a complaint against Berkeley County Water, which is not true. So, the person I talked to didn't identify herself, the officer didn't want to speak to me about it. I didn't get to speak to an officer until this last Sunday. County police officer, of course, has dialed 911, it's a non-emergency number, which is kind of complicated. So, the officer was nice enough to respond related to him. He told me to see the engineer, I don't know who the engineer is. Asked about the permits and was told and maybe suggested maybe I'll look much to the engineer's labor department. I'm just curious as to if this company's opening, what their business is. I can't go down and do what they did. They came and they sprayed, painted, they followed the county's markings for county water, count on our property, and they sprayed, painted, and marked it looking for utility. If they're not to be working with county water or were told not to do, I'm just curious as to why they're still out there doing it as of this last weekend.
There's a lot of activity out in Spring Mills for fiber optic installation. And the water company and the sewer board have had trouble with the fiber optic people intersecting the water lines. Now, I don't know if this is what your situation is or not, but I do know-
Is that business card from one of the people?
It is indeed. I gave Mr., I sent Mr. Ross a copy of it as well too. County police officer has a copy of it too. I gave whoever it was, they had talked to me over at county police station. She also took a copy of it as well too. And her response to me was, unless Berkeley County Water tells them to cease what they're doing, that I can't say anything. And I told her I disagree with that completely. It's private property, you're paying tax to be on the property, and if they're not to be doing permits, if they permitted to do something for this company, I'm just curious as to what them bringing in Spring Mills and not being able to work, what it has to do with us. Now, I do understand utilities have easements and rights to maintain, check, and I'm aware of that, and we respect that for the most part. But this company being told by Berkeley County Water, they were not even supposed to be looking at, they were following their lines or whatever, doing what they were doing in essence. So, my question to them was if I go over to wherever they're opening and do the same there without a permit, I'm sure I'm going to be cited to be escorted or possibly be arrested if they would file a complaint about it. So, I'm just trying to find out what, why they got permitted, or if either they're not permitted, how they continue to do that, and especially on private property and also misrepresent themselves the way that they are.
They do have a right to locate the water lines, but anything else, I have no idea.
Okay, and again, understanding with county water, talking with them also by employees, that they were told by Berkeley County Water, this is where I got the card from, that they were not to be doing the activities that they were.
Willie, does your property border the old Duke Pond property?
It does, on the opposite side there. There's a road that they're screwing out there, and they're separated. Again, I, you know, as far as the property lines and everything like that. Again, with the, I've never had a problem with anybody doing utilities or, you know-
I say, where you live, do you have any public water or sewer?
Yes, we have county water running screw.
And not sewer, just water?
Just water, just water. And again, like I said, they were, I talked to the county water folks, you know, that were doing what they were doing, I know of the expansion and everything, but gentleman said to me, they were looking to see what the county's lines were made of, which I thought was strange. They're a company and they're opening out, I would think that they would have contact with Berkeley County Water as far as utility extension area and what they're made of. So, kind of little, yeah, conversation there.
Willie, if you would leave Penny your contact number, I'd be happy to call you. I don't know if I can get to it today, but I promise you I'll call you tomorrow and try to get nailed down or get your answers, questions to your, your answer to your question also.
So, he can, I guess you access your property off of 11, of course?
Yes, yes, we're on Route 11, right on Route 11.
Do you border 11?
Yeah, we're right there off on Route 11.
So, you do border 11?
Yes, we're right there on 11. Again, I understand that the water department does have easements. You know, I don't have a problem with having when I lived in town. They, that's their job, and they do have a right to have easements, if anything, and access to their utilities that we use. So, I do understand that, if anything. But I would appreciate any help that I can get, and as soon as I can, I'd be happy to help. I'd be appreciating.
Yes, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
No, I was just going to, on that card, you say Mr. Ross got a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If he asks me to sign something, I'll be, that's all too. And just another item that I have real quickly, I, again, I appreciate your time. I just wanted to personally just let the council know how appreciative that my family has been to this county judiciary office. I mean, they just, they've been so helpful to our family here in the last couple of years. Recently, I lost my brother, and well, the experience you probably had with that. They help you to really kind of get things together, put your livestock together there. I just can't say nothing about it. And I hope I ever got the opportunity to say that if I didn't write a letter, I would be on state or in federal county councils. They're incredible people. They're professional, they're dedicated. I just can't say enough about them. And I think they should be appreciated. They're just incredible people. I mean, even their lunch hours, I mean, they're scheduled for, and they will stop and they will take care of you, answer your questions. I've never had a bad experience with them. From the first to the most recent, all I can say is that process itself has been streamlined so much more, it's more understandable, and they will walk right through everything. I just can't say enough about that, how much that our family is appreciated, what they've done for us.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If you could leave, if you leave Penny your phone number, I'll get with you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. Any other items from the public? If not, motion to approve the agenda. If there's no changes or modifications?
A motion to approve the agenda for March second, twenty twenty-three.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, opposed. Motion carries. All right, consent agenda, purchase order log. Anybody have any questions with that?
Nope, no questions, all right. Internal budget revisions, there are none. Have a change in status, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Shelley Shopert, circuit clerk for Carissa. Okay, Brill as a clerk with the annual salary of thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars effective March the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Change in status received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Rodney Frazee. He is receiving a salary increase for years of service. He will go from thirty-nine thousand seventeen dollars to forty thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars effective February the first, twenty twenty-three. And effective February twenty-fourth, per Larry Hess, Brandon Lloyd will be removed from payroll effective that date. And the approval of the minutes for February the fourteenth, everyone was present, so they can stay. And on the sixteenth, everyone was present. Council calendars. All right, we are here today, March the second, and at one P M, a TIF workshop will be happening. Let's see, we're going down here. On the sixth, at twelve noon, Region Nine.
You have the budget workshop the sixteenth, seventh.
Oh, did I lose it? Oh, man, I'm sorry.
Go back, go back.
Back, oh, I'm sorry.
One more.
One more. There it is. Hey, there we go. On sixth and seventh, nine A M, county council budget workshop, and at nine A M, the council budget workshop panel. All righty. Going down here a little bit further. Twelve P M, Region Nine, six P M, planning commission. On Tuesday the seventh, five P M, sewer district, and six P M, stormwater district. Wednesday, nine thirty A M, development authority, and six thirty P M, roundhouse authority. And on Thursday, the ninth, it'd be fire boarding. Anything else to add or subtract?
Region Nine meeting will be held in beautiful scenes downtown Berkeley Springs. And of course, I will be unable to attend because I'll be at the budget workshop.
Okay.
And I haven't told them yet.
You haven't told them yet? Okay. We have a stop payment, canceled check. From the clerk's office, what else we got here? Declaration of surplus property.
A metal and glass gumball machine.
That's pretty interesting. Still looking for it. Here we go. Yep, got it. It's a wooden desk, okay.
Yep.
And that's it? No value? No, okay. Okey dokey. All righty, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, opposed. Motion carries. Nothing from the assessor today. Board and meeting reports, H D.
Last Thursday after the meeting, I had the library board meeting. They talked about their finances. They talked about the H P A C quotes that came back. And I think they came back a little higher than they expected. Had a meeting with them coming up, so I imagine that happened this week sometime. We had the allotted roof, waiting on the H P A C forever. Did come back and say they had like twenty days, it was going to be twenty days, but they said that was incorrect. They had told originally it would be sixty or ninety, and they pointed that, they had pointed that out from there. So verbally had told them they had more than their time to approve it. So that's pretty much their meeting, they were working over there.
Very good.
I did go to Charleston this week and have several meetings. I think it was a good, good few days down there. Met with several delegates and senators and some commissioners, the ag commissioner, insurance commissioner, film's office, Randall Rees Smith with arts. He was very helpful getting me in and out of a lot of offices and doing a lot of things. All in all, it was pretty productive, pretty productive week in Charleston.
Very good. Anything else? Good.
Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. At a Berkeley County Public Service Water District Board of Directors meeting. Their bulk filling station water, that's at the bunker hill plant, is going away. And the district has no plans to replace it. And of course, those that use it need it replaced. There are several possibilities. One is to hook up to fire hydrants, like they do in Winchester, or put another filling station, bulk filling station, but they don't know where. So that's ongoing. The water district has no plans to replace it, but I think they'll have to. They approved purchase of Ford Explorer from Hagerstown Ford for forty-five thousand dollars. I don't know how to do that, but. Maybe you can follow along, see how good, how cheap. They reviewed and approved invoice fourteen for the design of the bunker and water plant in amount of two hundred and, two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Review and approved invoice number fifteen for hazen engineers for designs of two hundred and forty-one thousand. And they reviewed and discussed the draft tariff proposal from the rate. And the only item that they discussed was the capacity improvement fees. And they decided that maybe they should implement them in at the half and half, basically. So they did that so they can notify all the customers what the rate change would be before, of course, then it comes to us. So we can do with it as we please. And then yesterday, I had a Telamon board meeting, community action board meeting. They are doing, there's a building, six fourteen Virginia Avenue, that they own. And they're going to convert it to like a community center. And then they did financial reports and that kind of stuff. And they have the new member, he's a city councilman, Ward Two, David something, remember his last name? He attended. And that was it.
That was it? Very good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Stevens?
The only board meeting I had was the ambulance authority last Thursday, and I missed that due to a family emergency. But I talked to them afterwards, and the only really new business, the employees there fall strictly under the ambulance authority in terms of their raises and all. And they didn't get the fifteen percent, so they did give their people a five percent raise. So that was the only real business that was of any importance. As for the rest of this week, we've had a busy week. Eddie and I went to Charleston, left early Monday morning. Came back late Tuesday night, but you never know what to expect when you go there. Of course, H D was there as well. To be legal, we didn't all ride together, so we wouldn't get accused of violating the sunshine laws. But, you know, we talked on the way home, and I really felt that it was time well spent. And Eddie, he's been with me any time, but we've met with a lot of key people in the House and Senate side. We also had a one-on-one or two-on-one meeting with the Abrams, who is the chief of staff for the governor. And I'll be honest, I was pleased with the response from everyone we spoke to. One really interesting senator we met with, Woodrum, was actually a county commissioner at one time. So he felt for us. He understood us better than anybody. And we actually met with him Monday and Tuesday. But I think the highlight of the trip, of course, was our meeting with Senator Blair and Tar. And Woodrum was in that meeting as well on Tuesday afternoon. And we were trying to identify the twenty-five million dollars for the water board. And it looks like that money is still alive, and there's a good possibility. And this is in addition to the eighteen and six million dollars that's already been received. So it looks like that's going to become a reality, and we appreciate that obviously very much. We spend most of the time concentrating on bills that affect us the most. We still have a tremendous hope in getting the acceleration of the property transfer tax through. It's made it out of the Senate, so now it's back in the House. And of course, John Marty's in the House Finance Vice Chair. It was his bill initially, so I told John, don't ever return to Berkeley County again if you don't get this bill through. So we'll see what happens, but it could be a real key. And Eddie, with his expertise, we did a lot of work on the financing for the fire departments from the state. If you don't know, and, you know, I'm new, so I'm learning. Each fire department gets forty-eight thousand a year from the state of West Virginia, but we have five. McDowell County, who has less than twenty thousand people, has fourteen fire departments, and they get over nine hundred thousand, and we get two hundred and some thousand. And if you break it out into, Summer Baird, our lobbyist, had the breakdown. They're getting ten dollars or something per resident, and we're getting fifty-two cents per resident. So we think there were some strides made to, you know, get that changed.
Identify the inequity.
Yeah, and hopefully, now that money goes directly to the fire stations. But still, any money you can receive is wonderful money, so.
And it's a new bill that also now includes EMS, that they can also, EMS will also be able to purchase equipment off of that fire premium tax. So like Steve said, that was, that was a good bill that will help our local fire departments a lot. We also met with Department of Transportation, talked about our highway issues, of trying to improve the safety and efficiency of some of our back roads, what we consider to be back roads, and a possible expansion of new roads. So they were very attentive. I think that we need to do a lot of work with the N P O. We really need to start beating on N P O to try and get Berkeley County's agenda moved forward with them. We discussed the jail bill with the different senators and delegates that we were able to meet with. And I tell you, Summer and Dan Hall both did a really good job of getting us where we needed to be, get us in front of the people that we needed to be in front of. And it was really her information that, I'm not sure exactly where she got it from, but it was her information that she had sent down two years ago that showed what each county was actually getting back from that fire premium tax. And some of them still have the document that they pulled out showing that we got fifty-two or fifty-three cents per person, and where McDowell was getting like ten dollars a person. So they understood that. That helped a lot. And the other thing is Steve and I attended a meeting last night with the Fire Rescue Association in cooperation with the city of Martinsburg. Epic, which is a training organization with the state, to look at ways to possibly build a fire police training facility. It would also include EMS, fire police and EMS training facility at James Rumsey. So we've got a lot of work to do there.
Three point eight million dollars is the estimated cost to build this.
Have you seen the new fire training academy across from the Washington County Jail?
I have not.
They talked about it last night though, and were expressing how nice it is.
Yeah, I've heard it's nice. I don't know anything about it.
They did, they did speak about that last night.
But there's, there's nothing in our region whatsoever, and the requirements today, you know, are for live fire before these guys get their trained, before they can, you know, actually ride on apparatus. There is a true need, and I really like the fact that we're going to include law enforcement in this. And I think once we get moving a little bit, I'd really like to see us pull Jefferson and Morgan County in with this because they have the same needs that we have.
It'd be an eastern panhandle, which Rumsey is anyway, is an eastern panhandle facility to train students from. And, you know, I didn't know last night, Eddie, they actually have a class out there at Rumsey in firefighting, and they had nineteen students in it.
And they've.
That's where our fire boards, you know, recruit people to eventually work for the county, so.
They've been there for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, so it fits in well, to me, it fits in well by having it there at Rumsey, Rumsey.
So, you know, with the reduction in the volunteers across this whole country, not just here, but across this whole country, it gives young folks who may be interested in that field an opportunity to get some really good training before they're ever hired into a department instead of hiring them and have to train, train them. The other thing is I did have the opportunity to attend the C M C open house last Friday. It's why I welcome, you know, folks back to town, so. That's about it.
I want to go back to the meeting with the D O T too. Commissioner Ariston was in D C, and George Miller, delegate George Miller's the one that set this meeting up for us, and.
In Berkeley Springs?
Yes, well, he represents, he's my delegate.
Oh, really?
In Berkeley County, yes. And so he and new delegates Height and Hornby went to Commissioner Ariston the week before. And they were point-blank told that there's no major road improvements for Berkeley County in the next twenty years. And they were just like, wow. So, but I will say this, there were five people in that room. Two of them are pretty top officials under Ariston, and they were very receptive to what we had to say. They were very professional. They did, the one guy was actually on the Zoom meeting for the N P O. And he said, they expressed the thing that Eddie said, to work through the N P O to try to get some. And what we literally just begged for was, in the meantime, how about just improving some of our existing roads? And I talked a lot about nine oh one, that is getting heavier use every day, and trucks can't even make the turn.
Yeah, turning lanes.
Eddie talked about Arden Road, you know, out where, past Blue Ridge, there's going to be another eight hundred home development. It. It's. Steve? I don't know. But all I know this is, we just got to keep pounding the drum and speaking up. And I'm going to work on Matt Mull next, that we've got to get some action here. And you know, the problem is, if they would have said this week, well, we're going to do something in Berkeley County, it'll probably be five years or six years before we'd ever see the results of it. If they disagreed, good then. So at this point, we don't have anything on the table.
Did they say anything about possibly widening the third lane in on down to Berkeley Springs? Because I did hear that that's a possibility.
We talked about improving that. We even talked about a bypass around Hedgesville. We talked about.
But they said the bypass, the problem with the bypass is, they said it's going to cost a billion dollars. And they said it's going to cost a billion dollars to finish corridor H. And that's getting the money before we get the money. That's what I was told, pretty much point-blank from the guy that signs off on all highway jobs.
HD, my response was, Morgan County's getting a bypass, and the population there is nothing even close to here. You know what I'm saying? I mean, let's get our priorities in order here, you know?
Right.
Nothing, I'm glad they're getting it. Don't get me wrong.
No, I get it. Do you know what the price tag is on the Morgan County?
I haven't heard that price tag.
Yeah, I'd like to see a four-lane highway out there in the Blue Ridge.
Yes. I mean, but, you know, we talked about going back and rethinking the short road to Novak Lane bypass. I think that would help exit 12 tremendously. So we had a good meeting with them, and they heard us loud and clear. But, you know, would have any effect, who knows? But you have to try. And the other meeting that we had yesterday morning with the people that are designing the new Inwood Park, Bob Williams was in with it, with us. And we had a real good meeting with those folks. And I was impressed before with those people when I watched them on Zoom before I was in office. And after yesterday, they have the experience, they know what they're doing, and they're really sharp people. And they're the right people to design this park, I can assure you. And they could actually have plans ready to go to bid by sometime this fall, if we can get some money together to, you know, pursue this. But that's all. I'm sorry to go on for so long. But it was a busy, good three days, though, in my mind.
And that committee, you know, Bob's got a lot of past experience with parks themselves, the, you know, the outdoor. And then Mr. Catlett's, you know, 42 years of experience in our parks and recs. So that's really a great combination, having that expertise at the table.
On the radio coming in this morning, the governor supposedly found $850 million somewhere, it was announced on the radio.
Was it underneath his pillow?
He's going to build our training center.
I did learn about a lot of new grants getting ready to come down through, too. I have some people looking into for different things. There's the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act. Those grants are finally coming on board. You know, they signed it a couple of years ago, but it's taking a time to get here now. So there's grants for infrastructure.
You got money for your market, too, right?
I'm going to let them make that announcement before I make a public announcement. Yeah, I didn't want to.
Still thunder.
Still somebody's clout.
Yes. That's the only reason I didn't bring that up.
I like you three of the members here. I had to go to Charleston. It was for a different purpose. It was for a 10-hour drive and a two-hour meeting. But anyway, it was, the county's risk pool is the insurance company that we're part of that gives us our liability coverages. And long story short, I think the best thing to come out of it is their workers' comp break mod is lower here for our county. And that gave us a little bit different premium cost, which is a good thing. The, and then we also agreed to that there will be a premium return. Instead of like they would usually give us a dividend check back, but we can't do per se per dividend. So we'll have a reduction in our premium, which is probably going to offset about a percent increase in our liability coverages and our automobile coverage. But we're still way below the national rate for when it comes to insuring automobiles. That was a good thing. I don't know the amount of dollars it's going to equal to, but it's somewhere in a neighborhood of about $300,000. That will be distributed throughout the premium. Not only in Berkeley County, but all the other members included. I was not able to attend my Monday meeting to Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, but I will, I'll check in with Elaine to see what we're going on.
Yeah, I missed one Monday meeting because Main Street, because it was supposed to be last week. They had emergencies and things and moved it to this weekend. I wasn't here, so.
I had conflicting meetings. I had three of them. I had to be at, and I picked the one. Hopefully did the most good, so.
And that's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
Okay.
I'll say one more thing, Jim. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It looks to me like the Senate has passed on this tax break bill. And at this point, there's a real strong feeling in Charleston that's probably going to be the one that's going to get approved. And the Senate version has the rebate plan in there for vehicle, for personal property-owned vehicles. So the good news about that is, is that it'll help us in trying to get people to change their tags. If they do pay that tax, they'll be in a position to actually file a rebate to get that money back totally 100%. And the counties keep the money, and the state's the one that gives the rebate. So that could be, to me, a really good thing for us. Particularly in trying to get people without a state tax to change their tags. And I appreciate the work that Anthony's been doing on that, to get that to the point where we can start going after these people to change their tags. I think it's something we need to do, and we're going to do, I hope, and have some clout with it so that makes people get their attention to do this. But this new bill, if it passes for the rebates and all, could be a really good thing.
Had a new application received from John Sullivan for the CBB. We want to schedule an interview pretty soon, or whenever we can fit that in on our agenda. And we are now to councilperson issues, Mr. Catlett. Congressional-directed spending.
Yeah, and I talked to the grant ladies yesterday. And I don't, what I had on my mind was trying to get a request in for funding for the Inwood Park because we're going to be in a position by this fall to actually move ground if we have money in place. And we do have some money in place, but it'd be nice to complement that with additional monies. But at this point, it's due like next week. And so I'm going to just rescind my request to try to do something with the appropriations for this year. I don't think it's fair to them that they'll not have the time to get it ready to do. We can still pursue a land and water conservation fund grant. And, you know, outside of this appropriations thing, I was looking at it through the appropriations because if Manchin or Capito sign off on it, then you got a 99% chance of getting it. But we can get a letter of recommendation from them if we just go on our own to do it otherwise. And so I don't want to, you know, interfere with what they're doing now. And we'll look at doing this another way, so.
All righty, next on it is Tracy Gilliam's Grants Administrator, Fiscal Year 20 Emergency Management Performance Grant Award. Motion to soon approve, I hope.
Yes, this is the Fiscal Year 20 Emergency Management Performance Grant. I'll send it as EMPG. It's from the Department of Homeland Security through West Virginia Emergency Management Division or the Berkeley County Emergency Management Department. The time period was 2020, was 12 months. The total project was $57,424. The total award was $28,713. The required match was 50%. The EMPG grant provides funds to assist state and local emergency management agencies in preparation for all threats and hazards through the sustainment of an emergency management enterprise. The federal government, through the EMPG program, provides direction, coordination, guidance, and assistance to support a comprehensive emergency preparedness system. For the calendar year 2020, the grant supports the administrative and operational staff and maintenance costs in our local emergency management department. The program abstract, the grant funding reimburses Berkeley County Emergency Management for the following expenses. 12 months for electric to the emergency management facility. 12 months water and sewage to the emergency management facility. 12-month cell phones for the director and emergency manager. 12 months fuel and maintenance for vehicles assigned to the director and manager. Three months salary for the director and three months salary for the emergency manager. The remaining months for those two positions were reimbursed by care.
We would need a motion to approve, so. Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And do we have any other comments or questions?
I have a question. Tracy, would there be an opportunity like for Candace, I think? Plays a pretty big role in that office, more than just a secretarial role. And I know that other counties do a public information officer. Is it because of our dollars that we're receiving that we can't do that?
It's her title.
It's her title? Okay, thank you. Well, maybe we need to look at that somewhere along the line.
Just to change a few words would help in our title?
I'll double-check the wording on how it has to be.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was a dollar amount, a ceiling, or the dollar amount that we could apply for with that.
No, there's no limit to apply for. In fiscal year 2019, that we were awarded last year, we received $120,000. And there was a 50% match, maybe I counted 240, $240,000. It might be a matter of this week in her.
Yeah, maybe we need to speak with Director Lilly, just to see if we can recoup some of the dollars.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Update on environment study for CDBG grant.
The CDBG grant for the Health Department expansion and renovation, because of the percentage of the renovation and expansion, it kicked it into a full-blown environmental site. And so what you have that was presented to you is the findings from that. And there were no significant impacts. And the council would need to accept the report with no significant impact to the environment for the expansion and renovation of the Health Department. And direct the president to sign it itself.
There were no rare species found there, huh?
No.
No more deer bats?
No, not this time.
Nothing there? Well, good. Just going through everything, a lot of notes checked, just to, just to get granted, to do a bill.
And it was, we were 2% over the minimum that we could have gotten later.
There you go. Got to love it. All righty. Let's see, much to apply, well, that'd be good. So you want a motion to go ahead and do this, to give me the authority to sign the documents?
Correct.
Okay, need a motion to do what Tracy just said?
Motion to give the president the authority to sign the CDBG grant for the Health Department.
Flash second, Jim, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Now, when he signs it, it goes to where?
It goes to the grant manager at the State Economic Development Office, who is handling the CDB.
Is that in my packet?
I did put one in the packet.
And here? Okay, I haven't gone through them yet.
For him, yes.
Well, I brought it in here, so.
This is the difference. It's on your desk.
Oh, yep, here it is. Got it. Let me go ahead and sign it. Well, there's one other one here. Approval to apply for the fiscal year 23 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program Grant. COSAP?
Yes. The potential funding source for this grant is the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance or the Recovery Resource Center for the Juvenile Opioid Treatment Intervention and Prevention Program, otherwise known as JOATIP. It's a 36-month grant that would begin October 1st, 2023. The maximum federal award is 1.3 million. The federal request is 1.3 million. The background, the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program was developed as part of the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act legislation. COSAP's purpose to provide financial and technical assistance to states, units of governments, and Indian tribal governments to develop, implement, or expand comprehensive efforts to identify, respond to, treat, and support those impacted by illicit opioid stimulants and other drug abuse. In 2019, Berkeley County was awarded a COSAP grant to implement the JOATIP program with a project coordinator, case manager, and two peer recovery coaches, and sustaining funds to Project Aware, should be Aware, Project Aware. This grant partnered with Berkeley County Board of Education to allow the JOATIP team to present two good-for-drugs to five local high schools and valuable lived testimonies to provide prevention, intervention, and treatment needs to our most vulnerable in the community to the opioid crisis, the children. Through this grant, 4,656 students have been able to hear life-changing information. The program continued into the summer of 2021 through the Summer Soul Program, a summer school alternative offered by the Berkeley County Board of Education, for 489 students per week. In the summer of 2022, seven at-risk middle school students experienced a summer day camp for eight days, which not only continued the intervention and prevention support, but also allowed the students to experience some fun after a turbulent two years in the pandemic. 339 high school students were referred to the Project Aware program during this grant period and received lifesaving mental health care from East Ridge Health Systems in Martinsburg. To put this into perspective, the turnaround time for students to see a mental health professional in Berkeley County on average would take three months or more after being placed on a waiting list. Through Project Aware, the turnaround time was on average a week or less. This project abstract, the Berkeley County Council is applying for a continuation grant using the infrastructure in place at the Recovery Resource Center with the JOATIP program, continuing partnership with Berkeley County Schools, and adding the Berkeley County Day Report Center's At-Risk Youth Program catalyst. This project rule one, continue to expand peer recovery services to address intervention and treatment needs, primarily for students and secondarily their family members. Two, continue to expand and strengthen education and prevention activities through small groups in five high schools, while continuing to instill and reinforce resilience and reducing stigma. Three, it will provide funds to the community base to access and treatment for adolescent and families to launch intervention and substance and trauma, which is the catalyst program, initiative of the Berkeley County Day Report Center, whose goal is to provide mental health and well-being of at-risk youth and their families. Project Aware is funded through another grant through 2025, beginning October 1st, 2023. This grant funding will pay for the following. One full-time project director, I'm sorry, project coordinator, salary and friends for three years at $216,906. Two full-time peer recovery coaches, salary and friends for three years at $378,186. One full-time case manager, salary and friends for three years, $189,093. One full-time therapist, salary and friends for three years, $310,215. For a personnel total of $1,094,400. Required attendance at two BJA conferences in Washington, DC during year two and three of the grant at $4,060. Outreach supplies for three years total at $44,040. And a research partner for three years at a total of $157,500. And the research partner gives us a priority advantage when they go to score and review the grant. It moves us to the top of the stack.
Okay. Need a motion to approve?
Like, motion that we approve and give the, or ask that our grant department apply for the fiscal year 2023 comprehensive opioid stimulant to include COSAP and JOATIP program.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. I think I got them all signed here for you.
Yeah, this program is, is really critically important to our children. And this could be one of the, the best programs that is administered.
I feel in my twenty years of experience, that the JOATIP program, and with it being combined with the catalyst program, is probably one of the best in the country. The fact that it is, they, they tweaked it a little bit. We were kind of at a disadvantage because the pandemic shut it down for almost a year and a half. And they were still able to reach over, over four thousand, over four thousand children. To be able to have children referred to mental health services in a week or less is probably one of the most important elements in, in this, in this program.
Yeah, I think we've, we've found that when a lot of people were slowing down different programs, the truth of it is, we should have been accelerating those programs. But we found that an increase in drug activity and mental health issues during that time when programs were kind of subdued because of, of the opioid or, or the COVID.
The children often get forgotten if their parents suffer from substance use disorder and not realizing that they need assistance as well. And so this provides that, and they're not forgotten.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Elizabeth? Your turn.
Okay, so there's a slight revision on the one that's in the read ahead. This grant, it's for thirty-six months, three years, not four years. What I, what I have on the, so this is a request to apply for PHS fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-two staffing for adequate fire emergency response grant, SAFER. Potential funding source is the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management. It's for the Hedgesville Volunteer Fire Department. It's for thirty-six months. It starts June second, twenty twenty-three. The total federal request, two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. There is a zero match. The Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response Grant is part of a comprehensive set of measures authorized by Congress and co-acted by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. The SAFER program supports the goal to strengthen national preparedness and resilience. It focuses on enhancing the safety of firefighters with respect to fire and fire-related hazards. The SAFER program provides funding directly to fire departments and volunteer firefighters, interest organizations to assist in increasing the number of firefighters, to help communities and industry minorities standards, and to change twenty-four hour staffing to provide adequate fire protection from fire and fire-related hazards, and to fill traditional missions to fire departments. So the program abstract is, the grant funding will pay for nine full-time paid firefighters for Hedgesville Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department, for thirty-six months, three years. The firefighter salary and friends is eight, eighty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Times nine firefighters is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. And then for three years, that's two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So it's full-time for three years?
Mm-hmm.
It's very similar. It's the same grant application as we used with staffing, Baker Heights. The difference is, uh, we're asking for nine. We already have three full-time employees there. So that moves the shift numbers to four. Well, they can comply with the two in and two out requirement, not only by NFPA, but also by the state, uh, West Virginia State Fire Commission. And, um, we, the county is, will be applying for the grant for the Hedgesville Fire Department. Whereas before, Baker Heights actually applied for the grant. Uh, but Hedgesville was not able to do that. So we can file for the grant on their behalf, and those people will be stationed there. And then it would also require an additional amendment to the MOU to address the, the twenty-four hour staffing as well. So, uh, you know, every volunteer fire department in this county has requested twenty-four hour staffing. We felt as if, uh, the Hedgesville Fire Department, uh, was probably the most at need for assistance, uh, at this particular time. So, you know, we reached out to their chief, we met with them, we had met with Randy, with our Director of Emergency Management man, Marty Roberts, the Chief of Berkeley Fire. We, we met, we discussed, you know, a lot of the issues that were pertinent to them. I think you've been provided with the information that you need, uh,
Yes.
With all the, there's, there's a lot of documentation that's required, so I, I hope we'll, we'll be in a good position.
When will we fund out?
Well, the potential start date is June of twenty twenty-three, so I think that'd be said in September, if I remember correctly. Yes, they have to be new.
The nine will be new, the three we currently have, that would set up. Right, now, but this would take them, that would take them to a twelve, that way they'll have four per shift.
We will have to make adjustments to one of the three that's already there in terms of their hours.
That's correct.
Right, sir. Right.
Increase of hours from forty-two to fifty-six.
And this is also, because they are our employees, not the, they're our employees.
Yes.
And this grant also covers not only their salary, but all their benefits as well, correct?
Yep.
Same thing it did at Baker Heights.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity, uh, for us to be able to get some staffing, uh, in that, in that area, so.
Yep, a percent, yeah.
You ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to make the motion that, uh, we, we approved the grant application for staffing, uh, for, for a safer grant for the Hedgesville Volunteer Fire Department.
I sent some from Hedgesville. I'd like to second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's, uh, right on time. Let's take a little break here, and we'll come right back.
We're back in session and we have Ms. Nancy Strain here with the Home Administrator for the City of Martinsburg Public Hearing for 2023 for the Home Investment Partnership Program. All you.
Thanks. Thank you all. Good to be here. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you all for, this will be our second public hearing for the FY 2023 Home Investment Fund Program. We had one earlier at the city, so then we'll have one here and then I go to Morgan County on the 15th and Jefferson on the 16th. So we're receiving input to prepare our annual plan. Home is the largest federal block grant program to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low income households. And we just got our allotment from HUD, so we'll be receiving $541,663. Last year we had $561,091, so it's a little drop. The majority of this program goes to the Eastern Panhandle's Home Assistant Program, the First Time Home Buyers Program. We have, since the beginning of time, since 2007, when the HOPE program started, we received $7.1 million for housing assistance. So, and that's supposed to go out to the whole area of Berkeley, Morgan, Jefferson, and the City of Martinsburg. This past year, we were able to assist 22 first time home buyers with gap financing to purchase their first time home in the City of Martinsburg, Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan. Last year we did about the same, 22, I think it was 22, 23. This year, we assisted nine first time home buyers in Berkeley County. Last year we did 10. Six in the City of Martinsburg, last year we did three. Jefferson was six. Last year they did, we did nine. And then we've actually finally got some action going on in Morgan County, so that's good. The nine loans in Berkeley County range from $140,000 to $220,000, so the prices keep going up. The average was more in the $160,000 to $180,000. Four of these houses are in Inwood and the rest was throughout the county. Several townhouses, no new construction. Historically, we have assisted 330 first time home buyers in the Eastern Panhandle. Our $4 million of HAP loans have leveraged $45 million in home sales and 41 in first time mortgage loans. Then also with the HAP money or the home money, we are required to set aside 15% of our annual allocation to be used for the community housing development organizations, we call it CHODO. So far, the only eligible CHODO in the Eastern Panhandle has been Habitat for Humanity, so we continue to work with them. They just finished building a new place in Jefferson County, and that was a family of five. They're still trying to figure out what to do with Auburndale, kind of stalled because they had some issues. So we're trying to get them to buy, purchase an existing home and rehab in the City of Martinsburg. See if they can try that. So, because they have some funds left over, we need them to get that spent.
Did they ever get the dump site there cleaned up?
No. It's almost going to be $1.5 to $2 million to clean it up. They can't get anybody to give them the funds.
Rockwood Drive, Rockwood County.
It's off of Boston. It's in front of the city's public works.
Okay.
Back in their humanitarian way.
Is Habitat looking to reopen a restory?
I think they are. I think they are.
That's a, I think that's a good resource.
And they're also looking at doing some scattered sites like Berkeley County and all that. Because, you know, and we, I continue to try to find new CHODOs as well because we have a backlog. We actually have a backlog in all of our funding. We have $814,000 of funding in all counties. So, and that's, that's just in the first time home buyers. But what's happening is because the interest rates have gone up, now working even harder, I've gotten some new lenders. Bank of Charleston just came in, got another mortgage company just came in, been working with Telemont on the home education class. But what's happening is that as the prices keep going up because of the interest rate, some of the people can't end up affording the house they want to buy. So it presents, so it's, we're working harder to get that to happen. So we're kind of looking at some other ideas to spend the money that's eligible. So we have the Home Consortium looking at that, and HD will be one of the new members, and Deborah and Ian are the other two members from Berkeley County. But we're trying to figure out other ways, and we're trying to get some other CHODOs in the area so we can spend some of the money on housing because affordable housing still remains an issue. The, the limit on housing is $218 in Berkeley for the maximum amount for a house, for existing, and $259 for new. The medium income is anywhere from two, I mean, the medium sales price is anywhere from $258 to like $260 some. So we're, we're kind of below even the median price, but we still are getting interest. It's just they're just having a hard time affording. So I'll open that to the public. Does anybody have any questions?
We'll have a motion to, yeah, we'll have a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Public hearing is now open. If there's any comments from the public regarding the Home Consortium and the Investment Partnership Program. Comments? Okay.
I did want to bring up your attention, we also have a $1.8 million home, it's called Home ARP, American Rescue Grant. And that begins for the whole vicinity. I've been doing listening sessions, one-on-ones with nonprofit groups, people that work, and it's supposed to be for the homeless or people that are near homeless. So we've been, I was up in Morgan County yesterday, I'm going over the ransom later this afternoon, but been outreach-ing with a lot of different communities and, I mean, agencies and people that serve us.
How much money was that?
$1.8 million. We have 10 years to spend it.
For Berkeley, Jefferson, Morgan, and City of Martinsburg.
So I thought I brought the brochures, I laid them out. I'll send, send some to you just so you can have one, so you can have it in case people want to know about it.
You said that was for homeless or near homeless. Is that to get them homes or to get them rentals or to give them assistance? What is?
Well, there's different categories. You can do, you can build new, somebody can build new homes, new homes. They can do non-congregant shelters like what the mission is doing. They can do tenant-based rental assistance, and they're trying to work really hard with the Martinsburg Housing Authority so they would take more vouchers because they still have a two to three-year backlog. And then supportive services would be for like a lot of the organizations like Telemont that do all the casework and case management, things like that. So, but there are, up when I was in Morgan County yesterday, there was a developer and he wants to, he's trying to build some affordable housing in Bath, and, you know, so he came, he was interested.
Did anybody talk about doing like a tiny home community or anything like that?
Um, no, but I think that was a very good idea. You know, they did, Habitat did the tiny homes for the flood victims and down, further down in the state, yeah, south part of the state.
You know, some areas near Atlantic Beach and some areas in North Carolina that have tiny home communities.
Right, right. And these were built at James Ramsay, and then they were transported down to southern the state.
Greenborough County, Lewis County.
Yeah.
Tiny home communities are better than the tech communities that we have in certain areas right here.
Right, so.
No matter where you would put them or how you would, you know, zone that or do them, but definitely be better than what we have with some of these back property fields with the campus and homes.
The West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness wants to try to build new houses for homelessness. That's their goal, instead of building shelters. But I don't know who would build them. That's the problem. You know, you got to get either an organization to build it, or if a developer builds it, 70% of the housing has to go to the homeless. So.
But then who maintains it? Who pays the utilities? That's the problem.
That's the difficult, that's the difficult part again. I have a question, Nancy. So anybody in Berkeley County is eligible for this Home Investment Program?
Right. Which one?
Where you live, rural area or anything.
Are you talking about that, which one?
The Home Investment Partnership Program.
Yes.
Anybody in the county. Because you said there were, what, nine in Berkeley County, right?
Right.
Yes. So, on the CDPG grants that were, were used over the years to build parks and things.
Right.
It was restricted to the City of Martinsburg only. Is that still the situation? We don't have any other area in Berkeley County at this point? What about the town of Hedgesville? Do they qualify since it's incorporated? No? Okay. So that could only be used for the City of Martinsburg still?
Right. They can utilize the home fund. They can utilize the home funds. Anybody can utilize the home fund.
Okay.
I should probably give you a whole list, a whole list of eligible activities for home funds. Somebody can actually build new construction of affordable housing, rehabilitation of affordable housing, reconstruction of affordable housing, other eligible costs are, oh, then this is something that can't be used is, we can't, I can't, we can't give money to Martinsburg Housing Authority. So that's why that other program would be really helpful for that, to utilize some of that. Can't use for delinquent taxes. But it's eligible to do other things with the home funds. We just have not been able to do anything. We've just made it a priority to use it for the first time home buyer program. We don't have the administrative capacity. So we would have to hire more people because you, but rehab continues to be a big issue. And every time I go out and do these seminars, we always have people that say they need their home vehicle, and there's too much older housing stuff.
The first time home buyer assistance, like that's anybody in the county, right? That's not just the city?
Yeah, that's everybody in the Eastern Panhandle. They just have to be income eligible.
What's that for, Mafina?
Yeah. It's for Berkeley County. For one person, it's $40,350. Two people, it's $46,100. Three person, it's $51,850. Four person, it's $57,600. Five persons, it's $62,250. Six persons, $66,850. This actually went down a little bit this last year, and I've actually lost some Berkeley County teachers to this program, and I've had to refer them to the West Virginia Housing Development Program, the one that you see advertised on TV where they give them the keys and they go in the house. That's similar to this program, but they have a higher income limit. And the reason they do is because they use bond funding to subsidize that program. We use HUD funding. HUD funding, we have to use their income. So I'm hoping when that changes here April to June, that I'll be able to go back up and we'll be able to help these schoolteachers in Berkeley County. It just breaks my heart that we're not able to help somebody purchase their first home. And I've also run into the same problem with some people that are working at places like Park to Gambler.
Something else you can refer them to, also is the USDA loans. First time homeowners have zero, zero money down.
Yeah.
Which helps a lot. They have to pay closing costs, but the zero money down has helped them. That's how I got my first one, USDA zero money down.
I'll give any one of these, and she can circulate it, but it's the.
All righty. If there's no other comments or questions from the public, we'll take a motion to close public hearing. So.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And now we need to adopt the resolution. You have it before you. Do we need to read that into the record or just adopt it?
You don't have to.
Okay. The Resolution of the County Council of Berkeley County, of Berkeley County, West Virginia, authorizing participation in Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia, period of July 1, 2023, June 2, June 30, 2024. Is there a motion to adopt?
He's a member.
Huh?
He's a member, aren't you? I'll make a motion to adopt.
The resolution?
Resolution.
All righty. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. I think it's in here somewhere. Next is Boarding Commission interview with Mr. Don Silvus, Berkeley County Museum Board. Come on up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you like and what we don't know.
Okay. Excuse me. First, you'll notice that it's allergy season and you're going to hear me clear my throat, maybe make some other strange sounds, but also, my name is Don Silvus. I am a lifetime resident of Berkeley County. If you know where Shirely Acres is, you know where I live because it's in my front yard, basically. So we get free entertainment whenever they bring in people. And don't really mind it that much now. So I'm a graduate of Mussum High School, Shepherd University and Shenandoah University in Winchester, Virginia. I've been part of the Historical Society since the last day of 2003. Don Wood called me the very next morning on New Year's Day and said, are you coming in tomorrow? And I've been going there ever since. I have been vice president of the Historical Society since 2010 and president since the end of April last year. If you wonder, our state right now, we're basically rebuilding post-COVID. It was devastating to our membership and our board. We're getting things back together. We're in sound shape financially and ready to contribute to the citizens, residents of Berkeley County. Spread our knowledge and our information. And I think a museum would be an outstanding way to do that. I can, if you want me to stand here and tell you stories about Berkeley County's history, I can do it all day, but you don't want to hear that. I think we have some small museums in Berkeley County. We have a great history. It goes all the way back to, as you know, to colonial times with Morgan Morgan, to the American Revolution with the D-line March that many citizens of Berkeley County participated in. And it started in Shepherdstown, which at that time was part of Berkeley County. We moved on into the early 1800s, significant contribution to the Mexican-American War. The railroad comes to Martinsburg and Berkeley County is alive. It's connected to the outside world. Had that not happened, Berkeley County would be in white spot in the world, basically, opened it up to the world, which contributed to the importance of Martinsburg, Berkeley County and the Civil War and the Industrial Revolution, on to World War I. You know about the huge, huge textile industry, the apple industry. I guess you'd say evolved into something a little bit different now, more of a distribution center as the world kind of goes toward, or this country kind of goes toward service industries and service type of, what do I want to say, economy. We're right there. But we need to remember our history. I think a museum is an outstanding way to do that. We bring in people from all these other organizations. It's a shame that our historical roots don't work together better. Hopefully, this will make that happen. I'd like to see that happen. Tried to reach out, doing so now, starting to form some alliances and I'm not the answer to the problem, but I can certainly make a significant contribution actually. Because I'm a lifetime resident, I have an attachment here. This is home. I want to see things like this happen and I want to see that be successful. And I want people to come here and see the stories we can tell, the history we have, the history we can share. I think that would bring in people. And I could keep going, but I'll stop because.
You sold me already.
Thank you.
We'll start with Mr. H D Boyd, if he has any questions or comments or.
Sounds like a great candidate.
Thank you.
He's just in Charleston. Spent some good time in the museum there, State Museum. Have you been there and seen that?
No, I haven't.
It's downstairs in the Art Center there, right next to the Capitol Building. It's wonderful. I spoke with the curator who designed that and worked on that. And we're working to get some money secured through grants to get our museum completed up here. So, yeah, what you say sounds great, man.
Thank you.
Barnhart?
I see you're employed by Shenandoah University.
Yes, sir.
What do you do there?
I am an IT project manager.
Oh.
I've worked in the IT field since 1988 before it was called IT. I've worked for the Library Corporation in Inwood until 2006, which is computer software. Then went to Shenandoah University. One of the things we do at Shenandoah is we give our students, as part of their tuition, an Apple computer, an iPad and an Apple pencil. I run the project. The project started in late 2008. They offered it to me and I said, yes, I'll take it. And everyone in the room said, you'll never make it work. We're about to enter year 15. Obviously, we've made it work. It's seen our enrollment increase. We've moved up to a higher level of something called mobile learning. Take your, you can learn with your phone. You can, our students can do their assignments on their phone. We've made that happen and the best result of that was in 2020, when we had to shut down for COVID, it was just flipping a switch. I mean, our students left on Friday, March 13th. They were on spring break the next week and the following week, classes resumed. Everything was online and everything is already in place because of my project.
And then you can.
Flipping a switch.
You can adapt that to our museum.
Yes, sir, we can. Technology will help.
Technology, I hear, is a wonderful thing. I'm not convinced of it, but.
It can be. I've seen both sides. And I do admit that there's a dark side.
Eddie?
I've had the pleasure of knowing you practically my entire life. And, you know, you've always been a, you know, very upstanding person. And I know your love for history and I appreciate your involvement in protecting our history.
And we had the same high school history.
We did. We certainly did. He was probably paying a little bit more close attention than I may have been at that particular day, but, no, I just, I know that you've really donated your, your time and your passion to our history and it's appreciated. I think you would serve on this committee very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Problem I have with your resume is under your reference, you have Bill Stubble listed, Stubblefield listed as the honorable, so I mean, I'm just teasing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think you're looking at my resume.
Mr. Silvus, I don't have any questions unless anybody else does, but I can, I can tell you that, you know, we're, we're trying to form the board and, you know, we're not quite yet to appoint any of the members, but we, we've certainly got quite a, quite a venue to pick from. And we want to thank you for taking your time and your interest in our county.
Thank you.
And it's, it's always nice to see homegrown residents that want to, want to make an everlasting impression here, so.
Well, like I said, it is home and you're very welcome.
Mine too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, Doc. All righty. Next up is Mr. Christopher Brees, candidate for the museum. So I think we have, it's going to be a nine-member board, so we're, we're getting quite the.
Good morning.
Quite the, the.
Good morning, Chris. Good morning, Chris. I think this is a kind of an honor to be here in front of you. I think I know everybody on this half. This half I don't know too well. My name is Chris Brees. I've been, oh, resident of Berkeley County for 40 years. My dad worked for RCA and moved us all over the country from New Jersey to Detroit, back to New Jersey, again to New Jersey, to Los Angeles and South Carolina. And out of all of that time, I've lived here longer than anywhere else. And recently, I had some money left to me where I could have moved to any place in this country. And I decided to stay in Berkeley County because I actually love it here. I think this is a great place to live. The weather's nice for the most part and the people are fabulous. I mean, it's just so friendly. One thing that has concerned me in this period of time was the change of dynamics in Berkeley County. And I don't think there's going to be any stopping it. I have seen so many orchards and dairy farms and soybean fields just, you know, going under asphalt. So Berkeley County is becoming a bedroom community and through that, they're losing a lot of their history. People are not interested in their history. You know, they work in DC or down in, you know, Northern Virginia, they move up here and they stay in their home. So I think it's vital that we get a museum to preserve the history in this community. And my past here, I moved up here from South Carolina to become a deputy sheriff. I worked under Stuart Kizner. I was 10 years after that, was 10 years president of the Civil Service Commission for the deputy sheriffs. I've been 15 years as president of the Norwalk Foundation. I've been on again, off again, president of the Norwalk Antique Car Club, which does an awful lot for this community when they can. We donate every year. I know we donate to the park and to the rescue mission and to the food banks. So, you know, my heart's in this community and I want to see, I want to see this museum. And as far as the Norwalk Foundation, when we located this car in Colorado, it was through word of mouth. I had to track it down. I contacted the lady, kept in touch with her, kind of browbeating her for five years to get this car back here. And the, it was a struggle. You know, when she, she demanded that we buy that car after Balking for five years, she said, I want the money and I want it now. Well, how much do you want? $300,000 and not a penny less. Well, we didn't have two nickels to run together. So we found a man, a local man that was interested and he donated a lump sum to put on a deposit. Freddie Gant and his wife and Vic McPhillan and his wife Shelley, they went out to Colorado and picked the car up. Martin Fry, who's on our board as a treasurer, he backed it with his personal signature to pay her the $300,000. So at that point, we became beholden to Central Bank at the time, now First United. So, you know, they gave us a interest-free loan to start with and we started working hard to pay that $300,000 off. So we had two festivals out at the youth fair, 10 years. We ran a jewelry event, sat 300 people for a nice sit-down dinner and auction. We just this year turned that over to Relay for Life. They were helping us the last two years and we thought, you know, we're just going to let them carry the ball so they can raise money for cancer. We also went across five states and raffled eight cars, eight antique cars, which was pretty substantial. Just end of last year, the beginning of this year, we went to DMV crying and paid $18,000 to get that Norwalk car titled. That was a lot of money to shell out just to get a title for that car, knowing it'll never be driven on the road. So it's sitting over in Maryland. It's in a good home there, but it's not where it needs to be. It needs to be back in Berkeley County where it was manufactured. So our group, myself included, are very willing to help with this museum. Would like to have somebody from our group on the board. Everybody in that group is history-minded. Nobody there, we're all volunteer. Nobody gets paid for anything. And we just, we just feel like we would be an asset. If it's not me, it should be somebody else on the board to, you know, be a liaison. You know, we will help with fundraising. We do have some money stashed away that we can put into like displays and that kind of thing. So that's my story, sticking to it.
Mr. Boyd, do you have any comments, questions or?
I don't. Commend you guys and appreciate your hard work on getting that car, getting it paid for and getting it back. Do hope to look forward to having it at the museum when the museum is finished. And don't disagree with what you say. You were someone from your board should be part of it.
Thank you. And Martin Fry actually has a Stewart wagon that I think it was the month or the second month that the Norwalk factory moved here, the Stewart wagon factory caught on fire. And they said the flames were so high that they could see it in Boonsboro. And they had, I think they listed 1,000 slaves in partial assembly that were getting ready to be shipped to New England and they all burned. But anyway, Martin has an original Stewart wagon that we found over in Williamsport. He bought it. So I'm hoping that that'll eventually end up in the museum as well as part of Martinsburg industrial history.
Was this car built here?
Stewart wagon. It was where, it's right next to where the bread plant was or it was like an upholstery factory there.
Perkly upholstery.
Yeah. And that was in the building that's there now was the newer part. The older part burned to the ground, so.
Had to be a hot flame.
It was. They brought a fire wagon up from Winchester on the railroad and by the time they got here, the fire was out.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, I see you live in a good place, Swan Pond Road, I'm about two miles from you.
Are you?
Yeah. Yeah, I have nothing to say.
Dr. McCune's house just sold, the farm there just sold. Yeah, Big Mike Folklaw.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Well, I guess airline pilots make pretty good money.
That was back in his family.
Yeah. Yeah, it was in his family's department. But that's the era there.
So he did it. So he did enough, didn't he?
Yeah.
Is that the same one?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So it totally didn't work out previously, if he just.
Within the last month.
Yeah. He's been over there. Yeah, I have good questions and I agree that the Norwalk should be included in the operation.
Thank you.
And we're, we've got a ways to go yet.
We understand that. I will say that I'm 71 and I'm one of the younger people in that organization, so we're hoping it's not going to take too long.
I understand. I understand.
Chris, I know your commitment, you know, to the Norwalk and antique vehicles themselves. I think you still own your bus?
No, I actually sold that to a guy in New Jersey that uses it for movies in New York City.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a money pit.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's like owning a 1950 cabin cruiser.
Right.
It's like owning old fire trucks.
Yeah. But, yeah, it's, it's absolutely critical, I feel, that we get that car back into Berkeley County where it belongs. I appreciate Washington County being able to house it and show it, you know, because people do need to see the car. It's really, really a nice car, but it belongs here. And, you know, we started two years ago looking at the site to see, you know, what, what we thought could be done with it and not sell the building that we felt we could create this museum. And, you know, we have to make sure that all parts of our history are shown there. But I do feel as if the centerpiece of that museum, at least in my view, because I'm a, I'm a, I'm a car guy, would certainly be the Norwalk. And I know your all's commitment, you know, to this car. So want to get it back here and hopefully we can get the people on the, on this commission. We've got some work we need to do to the building and time and money is what it really comes down to. So, but thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Steve?
This group, I don't think we'd be here today interviewing people to be on this board if it weren't for this group. I think that's where the whole interest stemmed from, to make it hopefully become a reality. Chris has also quite an extensive collection of films that he always told me, I hope that's still on the table to get into the museum and from the old Andy Griffith days of calling, what's your name to, yeah.
I have, I started.
Sarah.
I started collecting phones when I went on a bus trip to Mount Burn with my son when he was in the fifth grade and there was a little girl sitting next to me playing on her phone and we were. playing on her phone, and we were talking about phones. And these kids have no clue about how those phones developed. So I have phones back as far as signal flags, up to a 3D cellphone that was never even sold in this country. It's sold only in Japan. But one of the interesting ones was this big radios that they used in World War II that you see in the movies. I bought one of them from Italy, and it had panels on the front, and I opened up the panels to see what's behind them, and underneath one of the panels, believe it or not, it said manufactured in Martinsburg, West Virginia. So I'm assuming that during the war, it was probably built out by the airport. The company is no longer in existence, but, you know, to find this thing from Italy that was made in Martinsburg, that was kind of cool.
The people on that board, the Gant family, Freddie and Diana, have contributed so much back to this community, building ballfields for us at no cost. I mean, just Shelley, McPhillan, and Vic, the question arena courthouse wouldn't be here today if it weren't for their efforts and stuff. They're all just quality people that care and love Berkeley County. And I just think this would be a great tribute to them for all of what they've done for this community, to get this thing rolling and get it become the reality. I think Chris would be a perfect person to serve on this board.
Okay. I don't have any questions other than probably, like Steve said, the reason that this pursuit of this museum is probably the one and only because of the Norwalk car, as well as the history of Berkeley County. But to find a place to bring that car home, too, and I think that...
Well, and you know, to tell you the truth, that our plan was to get the car first and then build a museum, we got to the point where it was probably going to be impossible for us to build a museum because of our age and what was involved. So we are thrilled that you all are on board with this and, you know, backing it, that it's going to become a reality.
Yep. It will be time-consuming, but that's our plan.
Maybe before I'm 81.
Thank you so much for coming in. All righty. Carol here. Yes, indeed. Come on up. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the museum board.
Okay. Well, Carol Appenzeller, I lived in Berkeley County for 23 years in Greensburg, moved over from Washington County, Maryland previously. And I am really excited about establishing a new strip panty museum in Whitechapel. But I know from, as a tourist perspective, we need another museum that's open more regularly throughout the year for people coming through here. I've had extensive experience with museum collections, management of objects and archival materials, not only as Berkeley County Historical Society collection manager, curator of exhibits, which I was for 11 years, but also in various other arenas. Through the past, through past jobs, both paid and volunteer, I've worked on or contributed to temporary exhibits at Antique National Battlefield Park, Washington County Rural Heritage Museum, Washington County Historical Society, and Martinsburg Berkeley County Public Library, the 250th anniversary work with Keith Hammersley. I've also consulted with Jefferson County Museum, Museum of the Shenandoah Valley, and with the West Virginia Culture and History Center, as well as the Shippensburg Pennsylvania University of National Archives. I've also volunteered with the collection manager at Harper's Ferry National Park. I've served on the Board of Preservation Alliance of West Virginia, and I'm currently on the board of Berkeley County Historical Society. And just to highlight from my resume, I do have a master's degree in public history from Shippensburg. And years before that, I got a certificate in historic preservation. I also did my graduate internship with National Archives.
Very good.
That's a synopsis there.
Where'd you do that? At Harper's Ferry?
Harper's Ferry Center, which is the conservation center in Charlestown.
Okay.
So that all fits into taking care of objects.
Is that called the Warm Springs Facility, or what was it?
I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, Warm Springs because it's on that road.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Boyd.
I think you're well-qualified to be a member and/or employee of sorts or something there, so.
We got to get the building better, build it first. They want to talk about...
I know. I'm working on trying to find funds, so, yeah.
Thinking ahead, I like it.
Well, and I can, there's also things that are involved with creating a museum building as far as climatic, you know, climate control and all sorts of things like that. That is an integral part that sometimes people don't think about. And I have, I'm able to contact people. I have also resources that I can look up information to help with that.
I got a good verse of that when I was in Charleston.
Ah, okay.
You know, they have it hidden in the basement. It's more only certain lighting, certain humidity and air temperatures, and a lot of things like that that keep preservation of the objects that are in there. All that's very important.
Mr. Bernhardt.
What floats your boat most about museums? Is it the curation and the protection of the exhibits?
It's more the exhibits. I love researching and integrating it because that's a way to communicate history, and it's a way of putting it in context to what's going on around us. And that's what floats my boat more than anything else. But I can do cataloging and accessioning and storage.
One thing that really hasn't been brought up, and it's important, is the fact you've got this museum that we're talking about developing, but there are other museums in the system that need to be brought in to the county museums, so that there's a better control, collection, operation, you know, whatever you want to put it, for all the museums, the children's museum, you know, whatever. And so, you know, that's a function, will be a function of this board that people haven't really talked much about.
Well, yeah, and that's really the ideal thing. However you're doing with individuals and your collections and their interests. That sort of thing, and that makes it hard. But in the very beginning, you know, even if you do loans of exhibit pieces, to do temporary exhibits in the main museum, or sometimes you have long-term loans, there's ways of doing that. You can have permanent exhibits, and then you can have temporary ones that change off with...
Have any of you ever visited the Cogwell Museum? I have not.
I have not, but I've heard a whole lot of...
I was in that sucker once, and it is unbelievable.
I've heard some items in there that are very famous.
Yeah. I mean, it's like a two or three-story house, central alcove, and it's just stuff all around you. But that was probably 20 years ago I was in it. I don't know what the, what the status of it is now. But that's just, you know, an independent family that has this incredible, and there's several families around that are like that.
Oh, yes, yes. But there's ways of handling that, that they can be incorporated or else rotated.
Yeah, and I think that's a very important point, that to have the rotating exhibits, it brings people back again. You could, you could build a museum that's just all one museum, the same flat thing, but once you go through it once or twice, you've seen everything, now why do you bring the family back? I think it's very important to have the rotating exhibits and different things on top of your permanence.
Which gives another problem with storage.
A different animal.
Yeah, totally different.
And keeping it stored properly.
And it's, there are special supplies that are needed, as well as climate conditions, and there's also processing involved. I mean, everything has to be accepted and cataloged individually. You have to be able to know where everything is. They have to be labeled. I mean, this is all stuff that's under, underneath what you see in the museum.
It's one thing to have the Norwalk car sitting in there, but how do you display it? How do you educate, you know, show people where it was built, how it was built, and you know, all that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That goes along with it.
That car was sought after by also Jay Leno.
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
And he wanted it bad, so. Mr. Gottlieb, have any questions or comments?
None. I was in Seattle once at a conference, and my wife Shelley was with me. She went to a museum while I was in sessions, saw Dead Sea Scrolls once, which was just, it was the highlight of her life, you know, more so than me.
Yeah, yeah.
How easily replaced you are.
But, you know, something like that, though, the way it was protected and is what it takes to preserve something like that, I mean, can you imagine? I mean, this is incredible, but...
I was in Randall's office just yesterday, and they came through with this oil painting that they've acquired from Battle Point Pleasant, I believe, 18, mid-1800s. The estimate was $53,000 just to clean it up, enough to be displayable. They're just, where are we supposed to get this money? You know, but, yeah, some of that stuff is, it's a lot to do, maintain and take care of.
Well, that's where we have to go and include places like Procter &amp; Gamble, Clorox, those kinds of industrial places to convince them to put some effort into...
Our quality of life.
Yeah.
That's spoken of. Yeah, I actually read your resume here, where you're experiencing a couple different times. I thought, wow, very impressive background. Obviously, you love history and the curation and protection of it. But also, if you helped Mr. Hammersley during the 250th, I want to thank you for that. That was a wonderful display. My wife and I, my wife's a former history teacher, so she would drag me through there, and then she'd say, "Come on, come on." I've already, because I would just like read a lot of the stuff that you all had out there, a lot of the information. It was very well done, and so thank you for that.
Keith did most of it. Historical Society loaned different things for the different periods. I enjoyed working with him.
Yeah, it was very well done. It's changed several times throughout the year, so thank you for your involvement there. But I really appreciate your history there, your work history, and you seem like you may have a lot of those skills necessary. So, yeah, we've got a lot of people, and I'm very excited to say that we have a lot of people that have applied for this museum. And I think Matt has reached out to a lot of different people, because bringing a lot of different skill sets to the table. So thank you for applying. And I don't know exactly when we're going to make these decisions on the commission, but we have a tremendous amount of people that have high quality. So we're going to have a great commission. I'm really happy, excited for this.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, and we greatly appreciate you wanting to give your time back to this, to this wonderful community that we have, so.
Quick side note, do you have an estimated time of when the interwoven displays will be done?
Uh...
Has it been set yet?
Keith's April. Because I've already pulled the things from the Historical Society collection, but there's still a few other images and photographs that I'll get in touch with. I was all ready to go in January, and he was like, "No, we're not ready yet." So I'll keep working with him on putting that up.
Very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence. We have some estate settlements today.
I do.
24, right?
Actually, that number has increased to 25.
Okay.
Before you start, did you pay the gentleman to come in during Citizens of Response today to speak about judiciary?
I did not.
There's a full minute rebate down there. He hands out...
That's true. Well, I...
Did you hear? He complimented your office to the highest degree.
That is the first time that has ever happened, so I will have to write him and pay him.
He couldn't say enough, he couldn't say enough good things.
Well, that's great. That's great.
He said the professionalism, the time that you all spend with somebody that's in a dire need of compassion that you all have toward them, so.
Well, we'll put that on the good pile, and we'll keep stacking the bad ones, so. Anyway, this morning, I present 25 estates for final and interim approval for the month of March 2023. The additional estate not included in your read ahead is that of Kimberly M. Arvin. Ms. Arvin passed away resident of Berkeley County in December of 2018. Her personal representative, Jessica Arvin, the decedent's daughter and sole heir, was and still is serving around the country and around the world in our armed forces. As you can imagine, this made submission of documents and gathering of probate assets particularly difficult, even after the claims period had expired last year. The administratrix, Ms. Arvin, tried to, several times, to settle the estate, but had several open claims to deal with. Recently, however, Ms. Arvin seems to have hired a local attorney to sort out her late mother's final affairs. It was only yesterday that our office learned of the estate's release of all claims as shown on public record. Thus, we have added the estate of Kimberly M. Arvin to your list of proposed settlements here this morning. Yes, it is. As for the rest of these estates, all have been legally and are actually noticed while interested parties indicating their readiness to settle. All estates named therein have been published in the journal newspaper on or before February 6, 2023, as required by West Virginia law, and all show either no claims of debt, a release of all claims of debt, or have reported insolvency. As such, I ask for this council's consideration for approval of the 25 estates for final/interim settlement for the month of March 2023.
I also want to make it clear that the number one estate here is Pauline Marie Bernhardt, who, as far as I know, is no relation to mine.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments regarding that? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the 25 estate settlements for the month of February? March, March, sorry. In fact, we're here two days into it.
Still moving.
Now, I already have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign a pose. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
And that was odd. Sherry and I went to breakfast Sunday morning with a gentleman on here. I remember seeing his name, but anyway, I just met him at breakfast the other morning.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Super-nice gentleman.
We do require proofs of death before. We don't want people coming in saying, "Hey, I hear my estate's open. I'd like to see some of that." But anyway, thank you, council. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Wine, we're a little bit early. Give us an update on the done building construction, if that's possible.
It's gotten awful quiet.
It won't take 20 minutes, so you'll be done there.
Okay.
So just as an update, the project manager from Crabtree, along with the project manager from Redwood and Helman, and your building committee, Ebsen Allen, met for the first time last week. As you well know, we're full steam ahead of construction. They have two construction areas secluded from the public. They've got a wall right beneath you, and as you well know during the meeting, that it's full construction. You should, you can't go back there during the day. They're roped off, right? But if you come in the back door, which I guess you did today, you can see, it's empty.
It is. And I had to take a double take before I got on the elevator and went, "The wall's gone."
Yeah. The wall's gone. They've got a cool machine back there that if you've ever peeled up tile on the floor, they've got a riding machine back there digging that stuff up and grinding it off.
Yeah.
And then the front of the building on the Stevens Street side, they've started, they actually have a construction wall built through there, and they've started what you know is the old Recovery Resource Center area in demolition. So it is full steam ahead. One of the...
Any problems moving extension service?
No, no, none to date, Mr. Bernhardt. Everything's moving ahead. Matter of fact, facilities poured a ramp into their new offices down there just yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So there shouldn't be no issues moving up toward six to their move date, so no issues whatsoever. On the IT side, we worked with their folks from Morgantown. They're literally pick, upset down, they'll be back to business. One item to note, the Gant chart for this building is 17 pages long, within dates, fall of '24. When the PM sat down and he handed it to us, having had to deal with that, before I looked at it, he said, "You worked, you did this just last night." Took a couple weeks and it was huge. Some of... Some of the product deliverables are 63 weeks, switchgear, generators, compressors for air conditioners and things like that. So, some of this stuff is really, really hard to get hold of, didn't want to get us in this. So, just so we're all on the same page and that the council understands officially, full steam ahead, no great big known issues. They had a, they stumbled across a second subfloor in the deconstruction phase over here. They had it tested, they had some wind-to-seal caulking tested, if you will, and came back and all that. So, no major issues.
Okay. Very good. All right, any, anything else? Do we have a executive session?
No.
No? All righty.
Items from the public?
Uh, well, we'll be back in here, but, yep, we'll do items from the public. Nothing right now? All right, so we're on break. We convene at 1:00.
It's one o'clock. We're gonna start the session and I'm gonna turn the podium over to Mr. John Stump with Steptown Johnson about the TIF workshop that we're having here today. Need any introductions or should we just let everybody say who they are and what branch they're from and okay, let's start here with Mr. Isaac's would you just?
Greg Isaac's, Cardi.
John Stump.
Two counting.
Gillingay, Berkeley County Council.
Justice.
Edigo, Calhoun County Council.
Harry Wang, Berkeley County Council.
Greg Rowe, Water of Shore.
Yes.
Chad Riley, Fractor Group.
Jackson Smith, Berkeley County Development Committee.
Steve Cadiz, Berkeley County Council.
HD.
HD Boy, Berkeley County Council.
Nick Deal, Airport Committee.
Zach Wright, Fractor Group.
Kevin Gold, City Library.
Shane Garrett, City Library.
I'm Jim Whitaker, Berkeley County Council. I'll turn it over to you.
My wife told me be sure I wasn't too verbose, but I'm gonna take her, take her advice which I always find better when I do that and everything. So my name is John Stump. Thank you all for your time today. your time today and the purpose of our discussion here today is just to discuss generally the concept of tax increment financing. Tax increment financing has been around now since 2005. There was actually a constitution amendment that was passed to make tax increment financing legal in West Virginia. Now, tax increment financing has been around nationally for decades. West Virginia was one of the last three states to authorize tax increment financing. So let's talk about what is tax increment financing? Now, if you look at the handout that I gave out and you turn to the second page at the bottom, you'll see why I'm not a graphic artist. This is as good as I could do. But let's talk about what tax increment financing is. Tax increment financing is an economic development tool that works generally as follows. You take an area of properties, real property, and you designate those properties as a TIF, tax increment financing district. So those properties then are certified with a base assessed value. So in other words, a value as of a certain date. As growth occurs through either natural appreciation, but more likely through commercial development, industrial development, the additional taxes that are generated, real property taxes that are generated from those properties, go into a fund which can be utilized for water, sewer, road, and other types of infrastructure, economic development projects, either within the TIF district or for the benefit of the TIF district. Let me give you a very basic example. You have a parcel of property that's worth, as I say here, a hundred dollars. So you come in and you drop on that parcel of property a big box store, we'll just say that. Okay? Suddenly that property goes from being worth a hundred dollars to completion of construction, it's worth a thousand dollars. So the incremental value is the nine hundred dollars. That's the incremental assessed value. So the increment, the monies going into the TIF fund are the taxes on that additional nine hundred dollars. That's the basic concept of tax increment financing, is to allocate the incremental property taxes paid from development to the costs associated with creating a development. So in that example, the incremental tax off the nine hundred dollars could be utilized to pay for water and sewer, and other roads, other types of infrastructure that are necessary for development. Now, Walmart's a bad example in the sense that that's not the type of development we're spurring in the state. But I just want to give that idea of that increase in value. Do you have questions, sir?
I just wanted to ask, since Walmart's a bad example, is, in addition to the traditional property tax tip, are sales tax tips legal in West Virginia?
They are legal in West Virginia. They require legislative approval to do that and you have to have seventy-five million dollars in private development in order. There's a whole different statute.
There's still no Walmart.
Pardon me?
There's still no Walmart.
Not on its own. But the sales tax tips, and basically a sales tax tip, just to explain, is similar to a real property tip where you take the incremental increase in sales and the incremental increase in sales, that sales tax is then reality. So for example, if you've got a cost gap, that's the quintessential example, you could potentially have a sales tax tip, but it does require seventy-five million dollars in capital investment. It literally takes an act of a legislature to get it approved. We're working on one right now. Up here, you are probably familiar with the Hilltop House over in Jefferson County that's being developed there. We're working on a sales tax tip and a real property tip for that project on behalf of the developer. Now, where that'll allow the developer to utilize the real property tip that's gonna be used to build a portion of the cost of a parking structure, and then the sales tax tip will take whatever. But stepping back, so how does TIF work? Again, that's the basic idea. So what I described was one parcel of property. Well, that would occur within all the parcels of property within the TIF district. How large can a TIF district be? As large as you can imagine, is basically what the statute allows. So for example, with the case of the Hilltop House, there are, I believe, nine parcels of real property which just comprise the new hotel. That will be the TIF district. In Greenbrier County, we created a TIF district that encompasses an entire magisterial district. Huge. Yeah. And it's where, happens to be where the Greenbrier says. It's not for the benefit of the governor or the Greenbrier, but we built a wastewater treatment plant off that. So it's a, the act itself, the law is very broadly written. The idea here is to keep local dollars local and to allow and encourage local development as determined by county commissions of class one, two, and three municipal. Now, it's, TIF has been utilized throughout the state. As I said, the statute is very broadly written. However, there have been some rules, rules, there are some norms that have been adopted over the last twenty, nearly twenty years related to TIF. And the Western Development Office does have an authorization role with respect to TIF. Yes, sir?
Board of Education.
It's an excellent question. The Board of Education is not negatively impacted, to summarize. We've done TIF districts, our firm has, and myself, in fifteen counties, maybe more. We've never had a Board of Education complain about TIF. We've never had them object to a TIF district because they see, well, yes, sir.
Would the lowback tax have any effect on the property values when it comes to, we're subject to lowback tax whenever we push holders over.
Three, well, one hundred and three percent.
Three percent.
Growth, you know, of the growth. So we have to be careful on our growth. That doesn't make our county fall back into that lowback mode.
Sure.
It loses that value because it takes forever to get it back.
Yeah.
You all have such a unique situation up here.
That's taken into account any projections that are done relative to any payments that are gonna be made out of TIF. But back to your question on the Board of Education, because it's an excellent question. First of all, the taxes that are, the incremental taxes do not include any bond levies or other school, other levies, period, including any school levies. If you have an ambulance levy or, I don't know exactly what the levies are, those are not included within the taxes. So your Board of Education is not being negatively impacted on those taxes. With respect to the general property taxes that are paid, the process of the TIF is transparent as to the school aid formula. So the fact that those monies are not being collected doesn't impact your school aid formula one way or another. So the Board of Education, it's neutral for the board, except if you, if you look at it and say this growth would not have occurred but for tax increment financing, then the board is receiving the additional bond levy dollars and also school levy dollars. Excellent question. So what can we pay for utilizing TIF? Basically, we've done TIFs, again, across the state. We've done them for a variety of types of developments. The rule is you can pay for infrastructure, you can pay for economic development, property acquisition, you can pay for utilities, roads, signage, really anything that's gonna be owned by a public entity. So if it's gonna be a state road, eventually it's gonna be turned over to the state, you certainly can pay for that. If you want to repling interchange in, where we put an interchange in, in Mon County, up to then to University, University Place, thank you, then University Council Center, that entire area is a real property tip. So those properties are generating tax increment financing dollars that are being utilized for infrastructure, including dirt moving, in that, in that development. Now, it also has a sales tax tip, sales tax. But we're just talking about.
Could you conceivably overlay a sales tax tip, assuming the proper approvals, over a otherwise property tax tip district?
Yes, sir. And that's what's been done.
Really, unless, unless the development type is retail, what we're talking about here, in a lot of cases, in Berkeley County, has been industrial, commercial type stuff, which really is not conducive to sales tax.
Right.
Because they're not generating corporate sales tax. So it's more conducive to property than. But you could overlay a sales tax tip, assuming that there was significant retail development that later came onto a property tax tip.
Yes.
Assuming you got the proper approvals.
Absolutely. Assuming proper approvals, you absolutely can have a sales tax tip and a real property tax tip at the same time. Those, they're autonomous from perspective of each has separate revenue streams, and that's been done. There are only five sales, five sales tax tips in the state right now, and those all have a real property tip done in connection with the sales tax.
What was this district's status?
Thirty years. Up to, up to, up to thirty years. The county council can terminate a TIF district at any time, provided that there are no debt obligations, whether that's bonds or bank loans, or whatever the case might be, secured by the TIF revenues. So we've had situations, I had one recently where a county commission, they had their primary taxpayer within a, within the district go from for-profit to not-for-profit, the hospital, and we're in the process of terminating that TIF district. Because there's no bonds outstanding on it, and again, the hospital went from for-profit to not-for-profit. So it's a significant impact on the TIF district itself. It really just doesn't make sense. So the, again, the idea here is you set what's called a basis assessed value, and that's where you take the taxable value of every property within the TIF district as of a certain year, July one of a specific year. So for example, and it relates back a year. So if we created a TIF district this year, it would relate back to July one of 2022. Created in '24, it relates back to July one of 2023. Why is that important? It's important because you want to establish your basis assessed value when your properties are at the lowest property value. Because that gives you the greatest amount of increments as the properties increase in value and as development occurs. And that becomes important in some of, some of the ideas, some of the concepts which may be applicable for Berkeley County, specifically with respect to projects that are permanent in charge.
Can I ask a question, and you may cover this, probably will cover this later, because it's always been something kind of hard for me to get my head wrapped around it. I'm glad we got Greg Isaac's here because he could explain how all the Wall Street money looks at this. Because this is what I don't fully understand. I understand the concept of the incremental value. So we're going from a hundred to a thousand dollars. But typically to get to that thousand dollars, there has to be a lot of money spent before you get there to wrap that up. How does that timing work?
Well, that's a very good question. Let's use a, let's use a real world example. Okay?
That's the best.
Yeah. So you have, what, roughly eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse that's being built up near the Walmart at Springfield Station, when you see it from the interstate. Huge. I don't know what one of those costs, but let's put a hundred dollars a square foot on it. And Mr. Riley told me that's eighty million dollars. I'll take this. Or he did tell me that. I did the math. I couldn't do it. So in that instance, I'm gonna assume that that property as of July one, 2022, had a value of roughly zero, whatever the purchase price was. If that property is done, is finished, if that facility is finished and served by occupancy by July one of 2023, that value's gonna be something well north of zero. Right? I don't know what the assessed value will be on that facility, but it's gonna be significant. Well, that is, now, having said all that, when do the dollars show up into the TIF fund? If you created a TIF district and that property was included within the TIF district, that property doesn't show, you don't start paying, the owners won't pay property tax on that incremental amount, whoops, until September 2024. So you do have a substantial lag in when the dollars come into the TIF fund based upon when the development goes on the factual.
And how, how are those projects impacted by a pilot?
We got, yeah.
If, if there is.
Well, that's a good question. Because up until recently, you really couldn't do a pilot within a TIF district. However, we got the act changed about two years ago, and now you can do a pilot within a TIF district and it doesn't impact the, the TIF district at all. So in other words, if you had a TIF district and Procter &amp; Gamble, or the next Procter &amp; Gamble was gonna locate there, and you wanted to give them a pilot on their equipment, which I know you all have to do in order to keep it Virginia and Maryland, you'd be able to do that. It wouldn't negatively impact the TIF district, and it wouldn't negatively impact the next Procter &amp; Gamble. Okay? So up until recently, that was a real problem for us. We couldn't do that. So you still have that economic development tool, which is so important for you all, of your region, regional. So the, the TIF district, it's important to note this, is controlled by the county council. It is in your, by statute, you control the TIF district, you control where the monies are expended, what they're expended on. You would approve every dollar. Now, we, the process to create a TIF district involves an application, there's a project description in it, I'll get into that in a minute, and that sets the parameters for how you spend it. Do you have more questions here? Oh, okay. So you, you have the development district and, that's created, and every, you know, you identify every parcel that's gonna be within the district. Important note is we don't include residential within the district. We don't include residential, either growth in the district or existing residential in the district. And that is in part, sir, because of the concern regarding schools, and the school aid formula, and the state, you know, where the dollars are coming from. So another question I get, just to cut to the chase, is okay, whose ox is getting gored here? Where's the money coming from? So if I live outside the municipal limits of Martinsburg and I pay property tax on my building, my commercial building, in Berkeley County, out of every dollar I pay, less than twenty cents of it comes to the county council, right?
Seventeen cents.
Seventeen cents. Right. The other eighty-three cents, I submit to you essentially is grant to the state. I don't say that very loudly. I don't profess that a whole lot. But when you look at it from, where's that money, where would it go? It would go, a penny goes to the state, and the rest really goes into the school aid formula. So if it's neutral, the Boards of Ed, I would submit to you that it's, those eighty-three cents are coming from, would have gone to the state. So that's a, I think that's an important point to remember, especially in a county that doesn't receive a whole lot of grants. We've seen some here recently for the water district, of course, the airport, see some. But overall, you're just, you make eyes so high as compared to the rest of the state. You all know this more better than I do. Any questions on any of that?
So the complicated things of the properties within the city and the county?
Only insofar that if the county wants to create a TIF district and it includes properties within the city, the county, the city would have to agree to the creation of the TIF district. Okay? If the city were to create a TIF district that were entirely within the city, the city is not required to obtain the approval of the county commission. That's just the way the statute was written way back when. I know a lot of county commissions don't really care for that, and all I can say is that's just how it was written when the statute was originally enacted. was originally enacted. It hasn't been changed since. But if, in this instance-
They have a sales tax tip in the city, and then was the state got to approve all that?
State approves all sales tax tips. The state actually approves all real property tips as well. So the approval process, let me get through the process here, just quickly. So the process here involves, first, an application is assembled, that lays out what the concept is for the TIF district. It spells out what properties are within the TIF district, what the boundaries are of the TIF district, and all properties, for example, have to be contiguous. They have to, you know, they have to touch somehow. All properties would have to be in Berkeley County. As we said, if the properties were inside city limits, the county commission would have to get the approval of the city to include those properties in the TIF district. So that application contains all that information in it. It also spells out what the projects look like. So what are you going to pay for with these funds? My recommendation would be, you draft that as broadly as you possibly can, and that's what we generally do. Because what's in the statute, so long as you look at public infrastructure, economic development, those sorts of uses, is really innocuous. You can't really argue, you can't, I don't know how you argue with water, sewer, roads, stormwater, again, acquisition of property for economic development purposes. We've done industrial parks with TIFs. So there's, it's a very broad definition that covers a lot of areas. So that's in the application as well. So an application is brought to the county council. The county council considers a resolution scheduling a public hearing on the application. There are some notices that have to be published of the public hearing. But through that process, county council then, three to four weeks later, considers the application, considers the submission of the application to the development office following the public hearing. Development office, upon receiving, I'm sorry, it's Department of Economic Development now, I'm going to call it the development office, I apologize. I just keep getting older, I realize. But they have 60 days to approve the application, deny the application, or request additional information. So after they approve or deny the application, then county, after they approve it, county council would consider a resolution creating the TIF district, okay? At that point, you haven't obligated yourselves to do anything, other than create a TIF district, which, so long as there's no obligations outstanding to be paid for from the TIF district, you could terminate with the adoption of a resolution. So that's the process that you go through in order to create a TIF district.
John, is that when the clock starts, the 30-year?
It does. That's exactly right. Greg's correct, that the resolution that's adopted after the development office approval is when the 30-year clock starts to tick. Now, you'll likely hear through either the County Commissioners Association or Association of Counties, that there was legislation passed which extended the term of some TIF districts by another 15 years, or permits, I should say, permits the extension of the term of some TIF districts by 15 years. That's true. That was done. But it's not, it doesn't apply to new TIF districts. It only applies to TIF districts that went through the crash of 2008 and the pandemic. So there are limitations. We're at 30 years. So how do you spend the funds, right? So we create a TIF district, we've gone through the application process, you all approved it. So money's now, you know, after, once the incremental values have gone on the books, money starts to flow. How do you spend it? Well, there's a couple of different ways. First, you can utilize what's called a pay-as-you-go method. Money comes in on an annual basis. You could appropriate, and you would approve the use of those funds for the public infrastructure that is within the TIF district. The other way you can spend those funds is you can pledge those revenues to a bond issue. Now, that generally happens once you have a track record of growth and also revenues within the county. Or you have a developer that steps in and purchases the bonds. So those are the two ways to spend the funds. Let me talk about developer for a minute. You see two types of developers in TIF districts. The first type of developer is the typical developer you think of. It's a private, private individual company that is developing land and comes forward with a plan and asks for those approvals and the ability to, in the creation of a TIF district, to assist in the infrastructure that's necessary for that development. That would be a perfect example of University Town Center in Morgantown. There, the private developer, West Ridge, has driven in large part, well, they have driven the development, they also have driven the real property tip and the sales tax tips. The other type of developer that we see is a situation where a local development agency or other local governmental entity has been the developer. So in other words, they have come forward and asked the county committee, created the application, asked the county commission for authorization for creation of the TIF district, and then have served as the entity that bids the project out, oversees the project, just like they would with other developments. I'll give you an example of that is Huntington Dairy Development Corporation, which is local economic development group for Campbell County. They created a TIF district around their industrial park because they needed a sewage treatment plant for their industrial park. Alcon, which manufactures lens implants, started in Huntington and was, and had wanted a new structure, built them a new building, didn't have sewer. So the property taxes that Alcon paid went into the TIF district to pay for the pick-up sanitary sewage treatment plant. That was all done through HADCO, which is, again, the development agency for the county. So we did this in Putnam County, where they had an industrial park. They wanted to do a second phase of the industrial park, needed to extend utilities to do the second phase, and utilized TIF to pay for the cost of extending the water, sewer, fiber, and roads to the second phase of the industrial park. You can also, as I've said earlier, you can acquire property. We've used TIF for economic development purposes to acquire real property to enlarge an industrial park. So those are all established tools and methodologies for utilizing the TIF funds. So, and from my perspective, I've been fortunate enough to represent the water district and the sewer district for a number of years, decades, and having been up here a good bit, I don't see a better situation for a real property tip or one or more real property tips in Berkeley County. You have the growth, you have dramatic needs for infrastructure. There's no more valuable property than the real estate along I-81, to state the obvious. I mean, you have the most valuable property in the state, which, for the most part, we would like to see developed into commercial slash industrial uses, rather than tract houses. So these are all, you know, I think, elements that really support the idea of a TIF district or one or more TIF districts for Berkeley County. Yes, sir?
So if you establish a TIF district, it happens, we mean stiff district with sales tax, it happens to encompass some businesses that already exist that definitely doesn't come into it, correct? Sales tax-wise? But the warehouse you're talking about in Spring Mills, you encompass that Walmart with the whole strip down through there, would the sales tax from Walmart come into this, or no, because they were there previously?
Well, it's an excellent question. I'm glad you brought that up. I meant to clarify that earlier. So first thing, let's talk about real property tip first. So the important thing to know about a real property tip is, if I'm a property owner inside that TIF district, my taxes are not impacted in any way, shape, or form by the TIF itself, the creation of the TIF. I pay exactly the same amount of real property tax as I would pay, and personal property tax, as I would pay otherwise. And that's a common misconception. If we have anybody show up at a public hearing on creation of a TIF district, that's their question. Is all, you're going to raise my taxes? Nope. I'm not raising your taxes. Your taxes are going to be exactly what they are today, exactly what they would be, either are today or what they would be in the future. There's no impact whatsoever. With respect to including existing properties in the TIF district, with, the only real property tax that would go into the TIF from an existing structure would be if there were, would be the incremental increase in property taxes if reassessed, and then if there were any improvements funded. I mean, we've done TIF districts where we knew there was going to be significant redevelopment of, you know, a couple of car dealerships, or whatever the case is, and we wanted to use that property tax for a boat dock down, or boat slip downtown, public access to the river. So there's, and with respect to sales tax, it's really the same thing. You have a basis assessed value of sales tax, and so long as it stays at that basis assessed value, those dollars continue to go to the state. If it goes above that basis assessed value, then those dollars go into the sales tax tip. Important to note, if you do have a sales tax tip, and it's within a municipality, and the municipality has the 1% sales tax permitted under home rule, that 1% is not impacted in any way, shape, or form. It still goes to the county, or, excuse me, to the municipality. It doesn't go into the TIF district. It still goes to the municipality, the 1% sales tax.
And you then increase an additional sales tax, hopefully, in the TIF area? In other words, it's in the county, you said 6%, if you add 1%?
No. That's not authorized under the state code yet.
Well, there was, there was a bill, the Mails Committee.
Did that die in committee? I didn't follow that question.
It did die in committee. I don't know what county was pushing that, but we're going to have to pay 7%. In the sales tip, but you have to have the sales tip first. That was in the TIF, you're saying?
It was within the sales tax tip. I think it was Harrison County, or a developer in Harrison County.
So, I mean, from the county's perspective, we are losing out on incremental tax under the property. Yes, a large part of it's paid by the state, by the school aid formula. But with sales tips, it's all coming to the state.
Right.
And here in East Panhandle, everybody builds and shops, and Maryland, Virginia, we don't have the retail. We could add, I think, implemented sales in the TIF. I know it's a long process, but do you work with Ohio, Paris, or county commissioners? And how do you get the Menards, Capellas, and all of them to the table and say, we are going to invest?
Well, you really need a private developer, in my experience, because you have to have those relationships, you know, the developers that have the relationships with the Menards or Costco, or whoever it is, to bring that, to be able to bring that, those big box stores in.
Yeah. Costco in Winchester has about $200,000. If you're getting 6% of that, you could fund, all kinds of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I know there was talk, somebody still, about EJ in the area, we have this thinking about coming, I think, is whatever, councils or something like that. But we don't have a lot of huge swats, thousands of cars or stuff. Have a plan, so it's not going to be, it's easy here, as anyone's seen.
Yeah. And especially retail's upgrade. I mean, as we all know, retail has gone through a lot of transformation. But, no, your analysis is exactly that. I mean, a sales tax tip is all dollars out of the state, and that's why the legislature has to approve it.
And I think they would here, if they had to plan, because it's full of other states. One question I had on that was, so online sales are not, they still go to the state?
Correct.
But if you go and do an online pickup of groceries, is that, is that, is that the sales tax, or is that the special, the excise tax? Because it's still just money from the store that you order from the ultimate. There's a lot of, a lot of bigger percentage of money than that.
Right, right. It's all based on where you order from. So for example, if I live inside Martinsburg, I'm going to pay the 1%, right? Off of the 6%. I'm going to pay, you know, in sales tax. But if I, so then if I go pick it up in Spring Mills, that money's not going to, and that was a part of the sales tax tip, that money's not going to be allocated.
I thought there was something in the statute about online sales coming through the store. Order a home art, Menards, it's online, it's not actually purchased at the store, you own the service that you have at the store. That's still sales tax rather than excise. Is there a difference between some shift to your home version, you go and get? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's a difference. We haven't had that question arise specifically, because it all goes through the tax department. They're the ones that make the allocation. I can get you to our answer.
Typically, on sales tax, it's the tax latest where the sales consummate. So theoretically, if you lived in Virginia and ordered something, would have it picked up at Walmart in West Virginia, you'd pay West Virginia sales tax?
Correct. It's just whether it would be going to sales tax or excise.
Right.
Because there's still sales tax at some of those, I can't figure out what it is. It's not if you walk in the school.
Right. That's exactly it. And you're right about the real property tax. I mean, the county does have, does lose some revenue as a result of a real property tax tip, I mean, 17% or whatever the number is, certainly a percentage of that is revenue the county would have seen otherwise. So that is, you know, a cost associated with that. So, and the other piece of the sales tax tip, you generally wouldn't create a TIF district until, well, you couldn't create a sales tax tip until you had the undercoated. So it's a chicken and egg. Because a lot of times, you need the dollars in front from the sales tax tip or the real property tip in order to create the development. And that's the really neat thing about the warehouses, distribution centers that are going in now in northern part of the county and the southern part of the county, that they're under construction, close to completion. Your basis assessed value on those properties would be fairly low, so long as, if they come online July 1 of this year, TIF districts generate, created this year, that provides immediate increment for each of the TIF. But it's policy decision.
But as you pointed out, there would be, quote, some incremental loss of the real estate tax tip to the county, but that money is still available to be invested.
Right. That's correct. That's correct. It's just not going in the general revenue.
And it doesn't have to be, it does not have to be invested in the TIF district, does it?
It has to be invested either in the TIF district or for the benefit of the TIF district.
So if you had a TIF district, I mean, could it be used for quality of life issues? If there was a park or something that you wanted to do? So it could be used for anything that could be seen as a benefit?
Right. It could be used, fire stations, police stations, public safety buildings.
A public work.
Yes, yes.
John, but does it prove that to be located within the TIF district?
They either have to be within the TIF district or have to benefit the TIF district. And of course, the statute doesn't define what benefits the TIF district. So it's a bit of a gray area. But we've done, City of Hurricanes did, or, excuse me, Putnam County Commission did a TIF district, which is most of Tayside Valley, if you've driven 64 to, between Huntington and Charleston, most of Tayside Valley is in the TIF district. And that TIF district has been used to fund improvements at Valley Park. Greg and I worked on it two years ago then to do that. So they put about $15 million into their county park there, and it is in the TIF district in that instance.
So, John, just an example might be, if you like, you put a sewer into that area, it's in the TIF district, and you need to put a new pump station, and that pump station's not actually in the TIF district, but it's correct benefits of having a separate extension.
Correct. Right. And it's just shades of gray. So how far away could the pump station need to be? You know, where's the water tank? Is it right beside the TIF district? How far away is it? Who's going to complain? You know, those sorts of things. You know, those sorts of things. Another use of TIF, whether it was sales tax or real property, is it allows you to get ahead somewhat of growth. The way we finance utilities in West Virginia is off of customers. We don't finance utilities off of taxes paid. As a result, where utilities are almost always playing catch up because existing customers don't want to pay for future customers. So for example, we need to get water and sewer under I-81 in the southern end of the county. Well, are you going to pay for that off of existing customers? Because there'll be growth over there for sure, but how do you finance that project in anticipation of that growth return? And I think real property tip in particular, I mean, yes, if you had a developer who wanted to do a large development, sales tax tip would be a, a, a perfect use for that. But I think real property tip in, for that purpose, is, is right in the wheelhouse of what the development office wants to see and what the statute requires. Yes?
So I just want to clarify, you already said another residential. We're planning smaller sandboxes in the city, but we don't allow manufacturing. Most of what we're trying to do is downtown redevelopment. So we are absolutely not able to do things like reinvest our CNYG dollars, drive the increment in terms of residential portion. Because I'll just be very specific, our worst two sites in town that most need the infrastructure are the National Fruit Campus, we got 20 acres, and creating the infrastructure to be a real brown house for you. So together getting up 50 acres there, but the area around that is all pre-1940s residential that would need a major push to upgrade to be the code standard, much less ideal. So it seems to me that there should be some mechanism by which investing in that community of residential would still raise the increment. Is that not allowed?
The statute would allow it. Okay?
If the development office would allow it.
Well, the development office, their mantra is water, sewer, roads. However, we built a Lowe's using TIF funds in part because it was a brownfield site in downtown Wheel. We did all the site work for it. Brand new Lowe's, big box stores. Okay? I think what you're proposing is something the development office would consider. Now, if I'm Dan Ryan Holmes, and I'm not picking on Dan Ryan Holmes, full team, whoever, okay, and I came in to the county council and said, you know what, I'd like a TIF district because I want to put in a thousand homes, development office would nod.
Yeah, we're not talking here in downtown or development purpose.
Right.
So it's worth, it's worth at least considering.
Yep, you should call Todd Hooker. Absolutely.
So, John, I know a few years ago, we talked about some sort of, what if you had a developer going to do like a mixed use area? How exactly would that work with regards to TIF?
Well, in, in that situation, I think that if it was, if the, if it were mixed use in an area, if it's greenfields, I don't know. I mean, you just have to take it to the development office and ask them. The whole water sewer roads mantra developed when now Senator Manchin became governor. He did not like tax increment financing, he thought that it was subsidizing developers. So it became water sewer roads. Since then, there's obviously no longer a governor and subsequent governors have relaxed those standards. So we haven't done a mixed use development yet. That's, I know there's a couple being discussed, but they're in downtown areas. Uh, I think that the, I think given the revitalization effort and redevelopment effort in downtowns, I think they'd be amenable to it. If it's like in Easton in Columbus, I, I don't know. I don't know. But it, if they did do it, they'd let you do again water sewer roads.
John, what about a city-county partnership? We have several areas that have, have like city water, county sewer that serve those areas. So would there be an opportunity, when you could partner with the municipality to help extend, expand their services as well?
Yes, I believe so. If the county commission, county council created the TIF district, you can make grants to the city to pay for those costs out of the TIF fund. We've done something similar to that. There's really no mechanism, and I've just recently looked at this on behalf of another county municipality, there's really no mechanism under state law, as it presently is written, to say, all right, well, let's do a county-city tip. All right, let's both do it together. There's no real mechanism to commit that. Now, there is a piece of legislation that's currently working its way through. I'm not sure exactly where it is. I didn't see it up for hearing today. That does discuss county municipal cooperation, though I don't think it specifically mentions TIF district. So the bottom line is, yes, you can, you can accomplish it, but not directly through the great municipal.
So you seem like you have some knowledge of rural county. I, I guess it's probably your personal opinion, but how would you suggest that we look at this as multiple TIF districts throughout the county, like areas that we can see potential opportunities for growth, industrial, commercial growth? You know, can we like export this thing to the county?
I think it's an excellent question and the, the piece that I don't have a real good grasp on, but happily Jennifer does, is, you know, where all that development's going to happen. I look at it a little differently. I look at it as where's my increment at so that I have a flow of funds to go do projects? And, you know, I'm primarily a water and sewer lawyer. When I do tips, that's the way I look at things, water and sewer. I'm pretty familiar with what the needs of the water district and sewer district are. So when I look at the southern end of the county, right, I mean, I'm no expert, but I've driven south on I-81 and seen those orders set over in there on the right hand, on the west hand side. That's beautiful property. It needs water and sewer. So you have the Hines property that's currently being developed. I think you create a TIF district down there, and again, this is just my opinion. I don't have all the facts, but looking at it, you create a TIF district down there, you put those warehouses in there and it creates immediate increment. Unfortunately, I think that your, your infrastructure costs, what you need cover are going to exceed what a TIF district will pay for, at least in the near term. On the northern end of the county, you have the large facility you talked about. You have already some industrial growth happening up there, great announcement. It seems to me there's opportunities there to, to identify properties that could be further developed and infrastructure needs and consider a TIF district to that end of the, of the county. Now, the middle of the county, I just don't have enough knowledge. I know there's needs in the southern end, I know there's increment in the northern end. Those are things you need in order to create TIF districts. And I can tell you this much is, once something goes on the tax rolls at full value, you're going to lose the opportunity to have an increment. And that's probably the most important thing that I want to make it across today is, I know, I don't know the status of construction of those projects, but if they're going to be, you know, substantially complete and fully assessed by July 1 of this year, you would want to create your TIF districts in this county.
This is right now is Red Rock. What we've done in the J.
Big project.
Which are the most successful in the state? The sales tax tip or the public property?
Um, there just aren't that many sales tax tips. All of them that have been done, with one exception, have been, have been successful.
Been successful.
Right, right. And the one that hasn't been as successful, which is Charles Point, which is Harrison County, really has, I mean, the Menards has delayed starting construction there. Menards was going to go in there and delayed it. That real property tip there has been in trouble. We did a bond issue for that two months before the collapse of 2008. So the real property tax tip there's had some challenges for a number of years, which is why you saw the piece of legislation, as well as the 15-year extension of the real property tip.
Let me ask you something else, sir. So you say you can do both.
Mm-hmm.
The ones that have the sales tax, are they doing both or they just do the sales tax at home?
Uh, they're doing both.
They are in all, in all cases?
Yes, sir. There's far more real property, far more real property tips than there are sales tax.
I was going to ask you, do you have to do the real property first or do you do the sales tax?
Well.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, you can do it either way. The problem with, the big challenge with the real property, excuse me, the sales tax tip, is the requirement that you have $75 million in investment. I mean, and you have to be able to show where that's real. Then you got to get the thing through the.
And it's got to be something that generates sales.
Yeah, it has to generate sales tax, right.
So, so effectively, if, if, it would seem to me that, I'm not, certainly not a retail expert, but it would seem to me that, that the real property tip is something that we have projects now that could be identified that before that value gets created, could, could be put into place at a very, very timely manner before the actual value gets created. In the case of the sales tax, tax tip, at least as far as the county is concerned, you would almost need a, somebody like a Cabela's or a Costco or something of this nature that would be willing to build their store on one of those properties that might be in a, in a real estate, real property tax tip, but you would overlay the sales tax tip on top of that, correct?
That's right. That's exactly right. You would move the sales tax tip to wherever Costco went. I mean, that's, you know, that's the reality, or Bass Pro Shop or whatever, whatever the case is.
Or it could be done in the lead.
Yes.
Do you do property tip in three? Or you just do it through an interstate access?
Well, but again, you got to have the 75 million in, in development that's identified in order to get the sales tax tip approved. They're also not easy to get through the legislature. We're, and I think the Hilltop House sales tax tip is through the House and the reading from Senate. I'm pretty optimistic it'll, it'll be passed and of course, you all have, the benefit is some pretty strong.
It's in the leadership.
So that's always helpful.
In reality, there's nothing easy to get through the legislature.
That's true. Very true.
Well, I, I think ours is like Ohio County where it's trying to pull money from that city and I don't know why the one in South Charleston. Retail.
Wasn't involved in that. I've made, have no comment. I wasn't involved in that. They're, the, part of the reason to be fair to them is they're building the Nectar Road from 64 over to corridor D.
It's not going to be a bunch of people coming in there to shop.
It's unlikely to be a destination shopping mall. I agree. I agree.
That seems to me what a sales tax tip is designed for, a destination like, like a Cabela's or something.
Apple Store.
And you could argue Costco because we would probably bring stuff in from Maryland and, and maybe the southern part or northern part of Virginia, certainly a Cabela's or a Bass Pro Shop or something like that, which is a retail almost destination that people shop at.
And, and in every instance where we've seen a sales tax tip, there's been a, one or more, in general, more large big box stores that pushed, you know, the developer was the one who pushed the concept of the sales tax tip. It hasn't been done by your local government.
How long would it take to assess that tip approval?
A sales tax tip, you got to wait either for a special session of the legislature, which I think would be really tough, or the, or your regular session. So next regular session would be probably the earliest that you could get a sales tax tip through. A real property tip, if you started today, it's six months roughly. By the time you go through the reading process, allow for publication in the newspaper, after the newspaper publishes regularly, not on a once a week basis, and got through that process, development office approvals, et cetera, you're looking at about, about six months on the, you know, the safe side.
And then it needs another legislative approval?
No, just development office. And the way that we handle it is, before we would present, before we present an application to the county commission, we've talked with the development office, we've shown them the application, made sure they're okay with it. We know what the guardrails are. You know, I mean, we've done a lot of these, we know where the guardrails are so we don't, you know, get into a situation with the development office where they're like, no, we're not going to approve this. Because the last thing you want to do is bring something to the county council, county commission and say, here, we'd like it to be approved. And then development office comes back and says, mm, no, nobody wants to do that. We've waited at all costs. Yes, sir?
So you said, if we wanted to obtain, it's not finished for, you know, like July 1. She says that then June, you said six months, six months to June. Does it go through the day, we imply, or does it go through the day?
It's this calendar year. So if, so the base assessed value is established as of July 1st in the prior, calendar year prior to when you create the TIF district. So was that?
Start that down, get that.
Yes, sir. Have it done before the end of 2023.
So tell us the negatives.
Well, the neg, I mean, the primary negative is that you're losing 17 cents of every dollar isn't coming in your general revenue. That's the primary negative. There are perceived negatives in that you, you will have, you will have constituents who will call you and say, why are you raising my taxes? No question about it. I mean, it happens every time. Doesn't matter how many times somebody stands up there and says it's not happening, they will call you and say, you're raising their taxes. It's, there's some work involved for the assessor's office because you have, you know, you have to mark every parcel that's in the TIF district. They have to go through and create a database, basically, of those parcels. Assessors generally are not thrilled about that in other counties, some at least. But they also can be reimbursed to that extent out of the TIF fund. So it's not as though they have to, you know, don't have to do it all themselves. Those are the primary, primary negatives.
Have any negative impact on ratings? With Mon County. That's where I'm going with this. Mon County just got down there. So I, I think it wasn't, it wasn't very fair with the county. It was, that's a, that was a challenge that was still.
We're, you're a long way from issuing bonds on any TIF district. So I mean, I think it's a valid question. There've been some things happening on a national level in the bond market, which you have these dedicated revenue bonds where, and let's just use the situation, it's similar to a situation where if the water district's debt got downgraded, the rating agency said, well, we think we need to downgrade the county's debt. Well, that doesn't make any sense, right? This is a completely separate revenue source. And there's, so there was a situation where something like that occurred based upon, you have a dedicated tax revenue. So if I buy bonds that are secured by TIF revenues, real property TIF revenues, that's my source of security. I don't get to lean on the property. I don't yet, there's no obligation on the county to raise taxes. The county is not permitted in the statute to put general revenue to funds in to pay the TIF district, principal and interest. So, but, and so there've been some situations where the tax revenues haven't been sufficient in sales tax tips to pay the bonds. And for whatever reason, the rating agency said, well, that's on the, that's on the entity that, that either the city or county. And I don't know how you do that personally. And another rating agency came out and said, nope, that's dead wrong. So, but i- if we got to the point of issuing bonds, it's a very valid question. But you also would not issue, you wouldn't do publicly issued bonds for years. You have to have sufficient increment for that. That makes sense. Probably, I mean, less, I don't know, I don't know what that building would throw off if it'd be a few years, if you have that string of revenue.
So is there an in-happy component to this? Like in '08, when values dropped, if this county property dropped with values, which would have probably been a great time to bring those areas into a TIF, because we know that they're coming back. Who's going to doubt about that? So the timing of the world or our country's economy have a role in this, basically?
Yes, but I know I can't predict that. But the timing that I'm focused on, yeah, I know. I wish I could too. I'd be on a yacht somewhere. But the timing that I think you can focus on, if you want...
Is current project.
Is the current project, yeah.
That seems to be the low-hanging fruit to me. I mean, that would allow some of this. As far as credit ratings and stuff, I mean, as of right now, we're not, you're not talking about issuing any leverage on that income stream because we don't have the income.
Right.
And effectively, the entities that they're going to be completed, they're not paying the tax revenue. So none of that's in the, the ratings formula or the revenues of the county used to look at credit. I can see if you issued a bond on a TIF district and values in a TIF district declined, that it could impact your credit. I see that. But I don't see how that's an issue plus because, A, we're not issuing any leverage, and B, we're talking about tax revenue. We're not collecting, right?
Right, it's not an issue now. It would only be an issue if you issued bonds in the future and had substantial downturn in the market in your CISA. Unless your, you know, your real property taxes drop.
You said that it was a loan that either the county is doing, that's on the bond holders. The debt was issued through, on the county building condition.
Right.
It's on, it's in their wallet. It's on a combination of the county, but it's still, it's still a day with the county. I think we need to change a lot of that a lot of the time.
I, these things change, you know, they cycle through. It's just like banks, you know. Right now, it's very, very difficult to get a loan. Two years ago, it was pretty easy. So it cycles. And then we could enter a cycle where you would say, no, we don't want to go out and do a bond issue because we are concerned about our rating if things change in the future, or if there was a downturn in the market. I think it is something that's definitely worth watching because we're concerned about a downturn in the market.
John, related, I guess related to that, just for a similar scenario, I might, you don't shoot the human, Barbara, excuse this one. We've been involved in a lot of tips across the state. And I think, you know, the key thing is, one, the TIF districts that get in trouble are the ones that are created where there's not really good future growth, number one. And number two, it's where the decisions to spend bond revenue monies on projects that are either, one, bad decisions on where to put that investment, or two, putting, issuing so much bonds and getting so much out ahead of the development that would generate those property tax revenues, which I think was the case in Mon County. You know, they issued tons of bonds, got way, way out ahead in development, slowly calm because of COVID and a variety of other things. But, you know, a little more incremental approach and a little more selective on the projects you find from those bond revenues. I think that's a big key in making, helping those districts be successful.
And sales tax tips are much more prone to that problem than a real property tip. Your property tip, you're going to know, I mean, yes, the values may drop, but you're going to have a coverage amount there. So it's not like, if you're receiving a million dollars a year, just to pick a number, it's not like you're going to, in real property tip revenues, it's not like you're going to issue as many bonds as you can, up to a million dollars a year. I mean, you're going to issue bonds based upon $600,000 a year or something like that, so you have that variance.
Don't get, conservative approach. Don't get too far out of your speed.
Yeah. What you guys have is a guaranteed win. You want to generate income. And, um, yeah, that's a fair approach. We do issue bonds, what they're issued or... But I think the growth part, it's obvious you guys have. And it's going to, so they're going to capture it to better bond capital and capture growth. It's just, it's...
And you may never issue bonds. The only reason really to issue bonds is because projects are too large and you can fund on an incremental basis. That's really the only reason.
Or you know where the next projects come from.
Right, that's right.
John, what's your time? Does the developer actually purchase the bonds?
In private developments, the question was, how often does the developer actually purchase the bonds? So it's a situation where the developer comes in, asks for the creation of the TIF district. The TIF district is created, then bonds are issued. But because the bonds aren't, because the credit, the growth is not guaranteed, the development's in a very early stage. The developer takes all the risk and buys the bonds. And that happens very frequently in real property tips where you have new development. Where, and especially in today's world where retail is so difficult, developers and Mr. Duncan Harris' point, you know, we've seen a lot of developers who were out over their speeds. And the pandemic knocked them back, and then it changed to some retail. And now we've got higher interest rates. So commercial development is tough, and as is retail. That's really, I think, as good a summary as I can give. I'm happy to answer any questions or stick around and answer any questions.
So you indicated earlier that typically there's an entity that brings forth a proposal to the county council. It would seem to be that the home authority would be the ideal entity to do that? Is that considered very certain?
I think so. I mean, I'm going to commit, Jennifer, without her having to say so, but the development authority is certainly ideally situated for the work.
Perhaps the airport authority would be in the same situation.
Yeah, well, I'm working with the PSDs and the city and the airport authority to come up with a plan and application that makes sense. Yeah, thank you all very much. Appreciate your time. Back to your regular meeting. Mr. Barnhart, can you give me the honors of a motion, please?
Jim made the motion.
Wait a minute.